The time is now ten thirty, so we'll begin our meeting. The meeting is now open to the public and we have started recording. We'll begin with an introduction to our Spanish interpretation as well as our language justice statement from Tanya Johnson.
Hello, good morning. My name is Tanya and I'm the interpreter for the Environmental Justice Program at CDPE. Today I'm working with my colleague Valentina. I'm going to read the Zoom instructions and the language justice statement in Spanish and then I'll repeat it in English. Hola, buenos dias, me llamo Tanya y soy la interpreta de programa de justicia ambiental del Departamento de Salud Pública y Medio Ambiente de Colorado. Hoy estoy trabajando con mi colega Valentina. Antes de comenzar, quiero asegurarme de que todas y todos hayan seleccionado el idioma adecuado en Zoom. Si prefieren escuchar la presentación en español, hagan clic en el grupito que aparece en la parte inferior de la pantalla de la computadora y seleccione en español bajo interpretación. Si están usando un teléfono celular o una tableta, hagan clic en los tres puntos que están a la derecha donde dice more o más y eligen el español como su idioma de preferencia. Las y los integrantes de la comunidad están invitados a hacer sus comentarios en español si así lo prefieren. Nuestra organización ha asumido el compromiso de fomentar la justicia lingüística. Invitamos a la comunidad a usar su idioma de preferencia para participar en la reunión. Les agradecemos que hablen lenta y pasadamente y que usen palabras comunes para que sea más fácil de interpretar. Before we get started, I would like to direct everyone to the appropriate language channel on Zoom. If you would prefer to listen in Spanish, please click on the small globe at the bottom of your screen and select Spanish. If you are on a tablet or phone, click the three dots to the right of your screen that says more and select Spanish there. During the meeting, there may be community members who choose to give their comments in Spanish. If you are not bilingual, you will need to click the English option to be able to hear the interpretation. As an organization, we are committed to language justice. We would like to invite community members to participate in the meeting using their language of preference. In order to facilitate interpretation, please speak slowly, pause often, and use commonly understood vocabulary. Thank you so much. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Tanya. Language interpretation is now enabled and I'll turn it over to Scott.
Great, thank you, Brandon. And thank you, Tanya. Hi, everyone. Welcome to Colorado's third technical work session for 2024. I want to thank everyone for joining us today. My name is Scott Cassell. I am with the Product Stewardship Institute, which is the facilitator for the Advisory Board. Now today's meeting is a technical work session distinguished from the other meetings that we hold. We will discuss two topics today. One is eco-modulation and the second is post-consumer recycled content and materials. The goal of today's meeting is to hear from speakers and provide input to Circular Action Alliance, CAA, on the two topics. We will accept public comment at the end of each discussion topic. And now an electronic roll call will be taken. Sorry, an electronic roll call will be taken today. Board members, please type your name and affiliation in the chat. Be sure to send it to everyone. And I want to emphasize, we are not doing a verbal call for these technical work sessions to save some time. So with that, we'll go right into it. I will now turn it over to our first speaker, Nicole Portley from Oregon Department of Environmental Quality to speak on Oregon's eco-modulation approach. Nicole?
Thanks, Scott. Good morning, everyone. I'm Nicole Portley. I'm the PRO Plan Lead at Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. And I'm going to present on our life cycle evaluation rules, which are currently in public comment, which means that I'm able to present only on the rules themselves and not entertain any suggested changes. But I am grateful for the opportunity to explore harmonization with Colorado.
Nicole, Nicole, can I just jump in? Sorry, I don't know if you're able to turn on your video for folks or not?
Ah, yes. Can you see me now?
Thank you very much. Yes.
Great. Well, let's dive into it. On the next slide, I'm going to cover how our statute addresses eco-modulation and life cycle evaluation and disclosure and then talk a bit about our approach to these rules and then overview, provide an overview of the rules. So we have two pieces in our statute that cross-reference one another. The first shown on the slide here are the life cycle evaluation statute. And we're kind of instructed to draft rules that would contain standards for evaluation and disclosure of environmental impacts of covered products. And those rules are to be used for two purposes. For any producer when evaluating life cycle impacts in order to obtain an eco-modulation incentive. And then secondly, by large producers, which are the top twenty-five producers by weight of color-covered product sold or distributed into the state, those twenty-five producers have an additional disclosure mandate whereby once every two years, they have to perform an evaluation of life cycle impacts of at least one percent of their covered products. So these rules are serving two purposes: large producer disclosures and eco-modulation fee incentives. Next slide. And then here we have the statute pertaining to eco-modulation. And it's really laying out what the PRO needs to include in their program plan for our review and approval. They need to develop an approach to eco-modulation. We don't actually use the term eco-modulation in our statute. We use fee adjustment. But the PRO needs to lay out an approach to fee adjustment in its program plan that incentivizes producers to continually reduce environmental and human health impacts of covered products. This approach must include lower fees for lower impacts and higher fees for higher impacts. So you have to have both bonuses and penalties. And then the PRO needs to lay out how they have taken into account at least these five factors, A through E, shown on the slide. They can take additional factors into account, and these are not the criteria by which they need to eco-modulate the fees, but these are factors that they need to demonstrate they've taken into account in determining their criteria for adjusting fees. And you'll note, item D is highlighted in yellow, life cycle environmental impacts as demonstrated by an evaluation performed in accordance with Section 944, the previous section of statute on the previous slide. So we've taken that sub-D and we are writing rules or we have written rules, we have proposed rules on its basis. So we're kind of elevating that factor above the others, above the others with with some rules that would place some additional mandates on the PRO. Next slide. So just a bit on, you know, what does an eco-modulation approach look like? Here's an example from Quebec, which has been influential in our proposed rules. So it's an algorithm where different criteria, different attributes are resulting in bonuses of different proportions. So in red boxes, I have a few of those attributes highlighted. So recycled content, improved recyclability. And I'd note on the right, the 10% bonus for a case study is a similar element to what we're proposing in rule. We're proposing to mandate two bonuses for life cycle evaluation and disclosure. What Quebec does is their PRO works with a producer to do a life cycle assessment using a tool that the Quebec PRO has produced and operates. And they look at particularly at climate change impacts and reduction of climate change impacts. And if the producer can demonstrate that they've taken action to reduce climate change impacts, they can access a 10% bonus. So maybe someday, our PRO's approach might look similar to this one, where they have some bonuses and penalties for different attributes. And then they also have these bonuses that we are requiring to mandate in rule. Next slide. But one note of caution for the PRO in determining attributes by which it would eco-modulate. The department has done some considerable research with respect to different attributes of packaging and to what extent they actually correlate with environmental impacts. And we have a webpage where you can explore this more. But we did a survey of published life cycle assessments where different products were compared, products that differed in terms of their recycled content, the bio-based feedstock versus non-bio-based recyclability and compostability. And in that survey, we found that many of these attributes do not cleanly correlate to their environmental impactfulness. And because our statute requires the PRO to devise an eco-modulation approach that continually incentivizes reduction of environmental impacts, we would be taking that lens to any proposed attribute for inclusion in their algorithm. And if they can't make a convincing case to us that the eco-modulating on that attribute will reduce environmental impacts, then we would not approve that approach in the plan review process. Next slide. So if you go back to our five factors that the PRO needs to take into account, which are in our statute, and then to what extent our research shows that these factors correlate with environmental impactfulness. Yes, they do not all cleanly correlate. For example, post-consumer recycled content, it correlates, but only when you're comparing within the same material. Of these five, the one that has the most meaningful correlation is the life cycle environmental impacts. But the methods of measurement need to be comprehensive and standardized. Next slide. And then for the PRO, the prospective PRO, of which we have only one in Oregon, Circular Action Alliance, and who is seeking to operate programs in what was previously for, but now I imagine they're also seeking to operate in the newly minted Minnesota with its new law. There's this issue of harmonization and CAA seeking to harmonize across the states in terms of how eco-modulation is done. So this slide is just comparing among the four states. Need to add Minnesota. And so which factors and criteria are in each jurisdiction statute? And take this with a grain of salt. There may be some errors here with respect to the other states. But the states each handle eco-modulation a bit differently. California, Colorado, and Maine, I believe they call out criteria that need to be in the algorithm. So those are shown with the thumbs up if it's a criteria that needs to be incentivized. Versus in Maine, you have a thumbs down across all criteria because I believe their eco-modulation approach is applied entirely through penalties. So if a producer fails to reduce, then they would pay a penalty. Whereas in California and Colorado, if a producer reduces, then there would be a bonus. And then Oregon has the green checkmarks for the five factors that need to be taken into consideration, which are distinct from the criteria on which eco-modulation needs to occur. You'll see that in the impact evaluation row, we're the only jurisdiction with an entry. So we're a bit going our own way here. Although I believe in all four state statutes, the factors and criteria are not limited lists, that other factors and criteria, in addition to those listed in statute, can be used for eco-modulation. Hence, there may be harmonization potential here on impact evaluation. Next slide. So now getting into our approach to this rulemaking. We have drafted what are called product category rules in the world of life cycle assessment. And that's an approach to assessing impacts that places products on a level playing field and enables comparability. And then we also have some clarifying rules. Next slide. And in terms of those clarifying rules, they're also called scope rules. We have some clarifications with respect to how the large producer disclosures are to be done, as well as how the PRO is to factor these life cycle impact evaluations into an eco-modulated fee structure. Next slide. We are envisioning this rulemaking as a first step in a longer process to really enable comparability across producers, across products. You need to get quite detailed. You may need to have product category rules that are specific to different subsets of products. So we're looking at this as a phased approach. And in this first rulemaking, we're aiming for a single set of rules that is fairly general, but can apply to all covered products. And as such, would enable comparability for a particular producer for a particular product. So they can compare, if they've taken an action to reduce impacts, they can compare before and after and receive a bonus for that. But we are not comparing, we're not writing rules detailed enough at present to enable comparisons among different producers that could come down the road in subsequent rulemakings. Next slide. And so we've been proceeding down a rulemaking pathway for over a year now. I think we started on this process back in April of 2024 and it involved a technical advisory panel of experts in life cycle assessment, as well as a rulemaking advisory committee. And now we've arrived at public comment, which actually closes tomorrow. And then rules are to be adopted by our commission in November of this year. Next slide. I believe that's all laid out here on this timeline. Next slide. And so now just a bit of overview of our rules. They are broken into five sections and I'll go into a bit more detail on the four latter sections in this list. Next slide. In terms of the scope or clarifying rules, we are proposing that PROs would have to offer their member producers a bonus for simple evaluation and disclosure, for the simple act of evaluation disclosure. And this is premised on some research that the department did about a decade ago, where we found that simple evaluation and disclosure by a business correlates with action to reduce those impacts. And then we are proposing to mandate a second bonus that has to be larger than the first for evaluation and disclosure that meets our threshold for substantial impact reduction. And that's what I referenced earlier, when I referenced comparisons, before and after comparisons. So if a producer implements a change, like moves their production to clean energy, a clean energy grid, or moves from single-use to reusable, and they conduct a comparative evaluation according to our rules, and it shows that they meet our threshold, which is 10% impact reduction or larger than they would qualify for this larger bonus. Next slide. And then we have a rule with respect to what needs to be included in the report in order to qualify for the bonus. And it does require that some information be made public as our prior research shows that it is both evaluation and disclosure that correlate with actions to reduce impacts. But we are not mandating that the base data, which is often claimed proprietary by businesses when it comes to life cycle assessment. We're not proposing a mandate that that be made public, but the results of the impact analysis would need to be made public. Next slide. In terms of our product category rules, I'm not going to get into full detail here, but what we're proposing is a life cycle assessment approach. We're borrowing heavily from other existing standards, particularly what's called PFCR, Product Environmental Footprint. That's the EU's main methodology for life cycle assessment. And they have a standard suite of impact categories for which impacts need to be assessed. And those impacts are weighted in terms of their seriousness relative to one another and the robustness of the data behind the impact assessment. And so we are borrowing most of those standards, impacts, and their weightings. But then we are inserting two plastic impact categories. As plastic impacts, here we're talking about like microplastic pollution, have not been integrated into LCA methods to date, but there's movement in that direction. And a methodology has been peer-reviewed, published, particularly for plastic impacts on aquatic biota. So we're proposing to use that method. And then we have a placeholder impact category for all other impacts of plastic. And it would be just serving as a placeholder, like the raw leakage data would be feeding into the overall score without impact assessment being applied to that data, since no method has yet been peer-reviewed, published. The weightings for those two novel impact categories are fairly modest if you look at the final column. All of those weightings add up to 100 and the plastic portion is something like 4% to account for the novelty of the methodology. And then I think we come to my last slide. You may have noted that that list of impact categories did not include any toxicity impacts. That's because life cycle assessment methods for toxicity have a lot of error in them. So error that would exceed our substantial impact reduction threshold. So we are proposing that producers in their reports would rather make disclosures regarding hazardous substances embedded in their products. And we could use that information to assess for the future how to handle toxicity impacts. Their important human health impacts, we would like them to be accounted for in eco-modulation. But at present, we can't include them in the substantial impact reduction bonus calculation. And with that, I will hand back to Scott.
All right. Thanks so much for the great presentation, Nicole. And we have about 10 minutes for questions. So I see one here from Scott DeFife, but we're going to ask people to raise their hand. You waved me off. Okay. All right, people can read it on the side. It's a comment. Are there any questions?
I'll, Scott, I'll raise my hand.
Okay.
Just to say hello, Scott, Nicole, Scott DeFife, Class Packaging Institute. There's so many issues with LCAs. I don't understand why Oregon is playing so much of a role or putting so much emphasis on it. Anything that isn't studied enough to have data on the environmental impacts, especially things like microplastics in the marine environment that hasn't been peer-reviewed, can't fit in the black box, so it can't be studied, so it can't be measured, and it doesn't impact the LCA. If we spend 10 minutes on my issues with LCAs, it'll take up the rest of the time, so I'm going to let other people talk. It's just, there's a reason no other state has included it in their eco-modulation fees. And in addition, Oregon is so much in such a different place than Colorado in their whole sustainable materials management history. What is the recycling rate that we're talking about where we start in Oregon today? Not anywhere near where we're starting with Colorado. Okay? And Oregon's law is supposed to be incremental, unlike Colorado's, which is a complete takeover. So trying to compare the Oregon system to the lessons for Colorado, I think, is just really not where we need to be going.
Okay, well, we do have, they are ahead on these fees. So you can take them in various weights, but this is what one state is doing here. And we have just a couple more minutes and then we're going to actually need to exit and rejoin this webinar because Valentine's having difficulty entering. And I understand there's no VPN to join, so we're going to all need to exit and rejoin. But before we do that and break topics, let me ask if there's one or two other questions that you may have. Okay. Hearing none. Wolf, coming in under the wire.
Sneaking in here at the last minute. Nicole, thanks so much for the presentation. Just one kind of general, hopefully quick question for you. So under the Colorado law, the eco-modulation factors take place at two parts. One, it's addressed by the PRO under their program plan? And then we also have a separate situation where they get applied under our rulemaking process. Do you have a similar situation in Oregon where the PRO addresses their own EGMAS and then also the state develops their own criteria? Or could you speak to that briefly?
Yeah, thanks for that question, Wolfgang. So the obligation is on the PRO to devise an approach to eco-modulation and lay it out in their program plan. They need to lay out the criteria for eco-modulating and the magnitude by which that be eco-modulating for those criteria. So basically, an algorithm like the one I showed on the slide. And they need to make the case for how that continually incentivizes reduction of environmental impacts. And they need to also demonstrate that they took the five required factors into account in devising their criteria. The approach also needs to include both bonuses and penalties. Although we're proposing to mandate two bonuses, if those rules go through, they would have to include those two mandatory bonuses that are mandated in rule in their algorithm. But they could include other criteria in their algorithm. So in rule, we can mandate criteria, but we are not placing a limit on the criteria of eco-modulation with those rules. The PRO could propose additional ones.
Thank you.
Thanks for the question. And not seeing any others. So Barrett, you also came in right under the wire.
Yeah, thank you. Nicole, thank you for your presentation. I'm just curious, because it's just something I've been thinking about as relates to eco-modulation. Have you looked at, or has anyone looked at, like, so, right, the packaging is going to change, right? And hopefully for the better. But have we looked at, or has the department looked at the possibility of what impact that may have on the consumer financially? Whether that's positive or negative, have any of those numbers been ran as this packaging changes?
Looking at the financial impacts to the consumer of packaging changes. I don't believe we have data on that. Would you be able to provide more context about your concern? Like things like switching from single-use to reusable, making for more expensive products?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, exactly it.
I am not aware of research on that, but I will consult my colleagues. And if I do find any, I'll send it along to Darla.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for the question. Wolf?
One more follow-up question. So with the rules going in place, will eco-modulation be effective at the very beginning of the program? Or is it going to be a phased-in approach in Oregon?
So in the first draft program plan, which was submitted to us back in March by CAA, they proposed to phase in eco-modulation later from the second program plan period. And we will be publishing our official response to that plan next Monday. But we have already kind of signaled what our response will be on this particular aspect. It's our interpretation that eco- It's our interpretation that eco modulation needs to apply from the start date. I think there is some flexibility in terms of how it is applied over time. We've signaled flexibility in terms of the requirement, for example, that there be both bonuses and penalties. So we would expect the two mandatory bonuses to be in place at the start date. But if the penalty requirement comes later, we're amenable to that. We recognize that some time maybe needed to get things off the ground.
Right. Thank you for that question, Nicole. We're gonna have to move on to the next speaker. But I want to thank you very much for joining, and of course, you're welcome to join the rest of the session here. With that said, Valentine Fornell from CTO. I don't have a formal introduction for you, Valentine, but so CTO and Valentine in particular are very skilled, advanced. In, you know, EPR, it's from France. It's the PRO in France, or perhaps one of them, you can maybe clear that up. But France has a very advanced systems and Valentine is here to speak about each eco modulated fees. Valentine, the floor is yours.
Yeah, thank you, Scott. Hello, everyone. So yes, I'm the director for Eco Design and Reuse at CTO. And so the objective of my team is how do we help companies in in reducing the environmental impacts of their packaging? Through source reduction, recyclability, reuse, of course, and also some some work on on resource.
One thing, just sorry to interrupt, just if you could speak slowly because it is being translated for others. So that would be very helpful. Thanks.
Sure, sorry. So if we go to next slide, just one one idea I wanted to to share is that when we talk about eco design, we have several levers of action. Fee modulation is one of them. And it's very important to understand that it is it has to be done in parallel to other work. I will give you some examples, but a fee modulation where you have no solution for producers is useless. Basically, so you have to do all the work of R and D and innovation to find solutions, alternative solutions for what you want to change. And you have to also work, of course, on tools, sharing knowledge and information for all the producers. And then fee modulation comes as the incentive to change your packaging and have a better better impact. If we go now to to fee modulation, maybe slide five, we can. So the next one, we can discuss on the the fee. So how is the fee built? We actually have several ways of modulating the fee in France. So the total fee that you have, we have a specificity in France is that the fee is per SKU or CSU. So per consumer sales unit. And the fee has three components. First is the fee by weight of material. So for example, if you have a glass bottle, you will pay the fee for glass. Times the weight of your packaging, so the weight of your bottle. Okay, and then you multiply at the end by the number of units that you sold during the year. In addition to that, we have a fee by by elements within the packaging. You can go to next slide, maybe also to just to to see the the impact. Meaning that, for example, if you look at a plastic bottle. You might have two packaging elements. So it you will have a higher fee than the packaging with only one element. If you have a candy bag, for example, you will have probably thirty thirty one units of packaging. So you will per you will pay much more than the than someone that has only one unit. So it's you see already that we have several ways of modulating the fee per weight, per type of material, per number of packaging elements within the packaging. And then the third one is the bonus and penalty for specific packaging. If we continue to maybe the up slide nine, I just that we can go into the directly in the the hard way. If we want to go maybe on on the fee modulation, so specifically on bonuses and malices. So, okay, no, let me go through this one. When we're talking about the fee by weight, okay, we have a different fee compared to the material. So glass doesn't have the same fee as plastic. And even within plastic, plastic with a recycling stream doesn't have the same fee as plastic without recycling stream. So that's what you see on this slide. We have various fees depending on the maturity of the recycling stream for those type of packaging. So for example, it goes from clear PET bottle. That's the easiest to recycle. There is a recycling stream. It's very developed. You have a high value output. So it's the the best, I would say, plastic, so the fee is the lowest. And on the other end, you have PVC packaging, for example, where you cannot recycle them. You cannot even incinerate them, and so the fee will be much higher than the PET bottle. And then you have different plastic resins in the middle in between with different fees. If we go maybe again, some some slides afterwards, yeah, you can pass this one. I just told about it. Yeah, you can skip this one as well. This one as well. And yes, maybe we can go this one. So if we look at now the the bonus and penalty, so what we call within CTO eco modulation. It's really this this scheme of bonus, penalty and incentives that it's fairly new. So why what we want to do with that is really to help going towards hundred percent recyclable packaging and promoting source reduction and circularity. And we have malices for elements that disrupt recycling. Okay, can go to next line. So the the we have four bonuses and incentives. We have a bonus for consumer awareness. Okay, so if you put a message on your TV campaign, for example, or on your pack, it used to be on the pack. It's not anymore, but you have a bonus. If you reduce the weight of your packaging, you have a bonus. The first year that you actually reduced the weight of your packaging. We are currently changing this bonus. So it is currently a eight percent bonus, but it will become a bonus that will be the same as the 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 percentage of reduction of the weight of your packaging. So for example, if you reduce the weight of your your tray by seventeen percent, because you have done some lightweighting, then you will have a seventeen percent bonus. So we are currently changing this this bonus. Then we have a bonus for reuse, saying that if you have a reuse scheme and your packaging is reusable within this reuse scheme, then you have a hundred percent bonus. So you don't pay for now the the first the first the first packaging you put on the market. And we have also some incentives for integration of recycled content within the packaging. We can go more into detail if you want a little bit later. And in addition to that, we have three malices. So it's progressive malices, meaning that we first have criteria under investigation. Meaning, okay, what is the impact of this packaging element of this disruption for recycling? Once we have this study saying, okay, yes, there is a problem. It's at this stage of the 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 whole life cycle of the or end of life of the packaging. Then we put a ten percent minus. Then within one to three years to give some time to producers to change their packaging, the balance will increase to fifty percent. And then within one to three additional years, the balance goes to hundred percent. To be sure that we actually try to avoid all this packaging on the market. And we have maybe between ten and fifteen criterias that are that give a minus today. If we go to to next slide. I I can show you very briefly for now the results that we have. Okay, so if we look twenty twenty three, so last year, we had four five million euros of bonuses. We had nineteen million euros of incentives for recycled contents and almost nine million euros of penalties. What the first thing you can see here is that malices does not equal bonuses. Okay, that's important because it's absolutely impossible to make it happen. It's it's okay if it's not the same amount. Okay, because the the goal that you have with bonuses is to increase the number or the tonnage of packaging that have bonuses. And you want to reduce, of course, the number of packaging with malices. So the 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 objective of this accommodation is to have less malices and more bonuses. Of course, you can change the the criteria, but the idea in itself says that it cannot be the same, cannot be at par, bonus and minus. I don't know how deep you want to go into the details or maybe one specific bonus or malice that you are interested in particularly that I can dive into. Do you have any ideas, Scott or anyone?
Anyone want one particular one or wanted to choose one, Valentine? Just choose a basic one that can get the get the message across and and sing example.
Okay, so maybe I we can go to slide the to the chalk, slide twenty two, if you can. It's not the same number, sorry. So not this one, you can skip like three or four, not this one. Not this one, this one is can be interested. Thank you. So this is the recycled contents. Okay, so with the bonus that we have, we can follow the percentage of recycled contents within packaging. Okay, with an PET packaging, PE, flexible and rigid packaging, PS and PP. Just so you know, so we can we can follow the increase of integrating recycled contents within packaging. Then on the next slide. This is the malices that we have, so packaging that are penalized. We can see that we have different types of penalties, okay, and different results. We have malices that represent very small tonnages, okay. It's fine because their goal was actually to avoid the market to switch to the solution. So it's a packaging feature that we know have a problem and we are just starting to see on the market. So we put right away a minus to say, okay, no, this is not a good idea, basically. And it works because tonnages stay very small. Then we have another type of of malice. So for example, just to give you some some examples, we've had a few years back. We started seeing some glass packaging with non magnetic steel parts. Okay, for example, a cap or lid that were in steel, but non magnetic steel. So for glass maker, it was terrible because they were not able to actually sort it out from the glass. So now we we've managed to to stay to keep that type of of packaging very low on the market. Then we have certain type of of penalties where we have scheme that have proven effective. So the malice has been proven effective to reduce the volume of packaging with disruptive elements. The best example we have is carbon black. Okay, so packaging with carbon black cannot be sorted, so they are just they they can be recycled at the end. Well, we started ten years ago with a bonus for producers who actually switch out away from carbon black. And then in in twenty twenty, we started to push malice on packaging with carbon black. This malice was ten percent at first, so we saw a first decrease, then an increase in fifty percent malice. And then to hundred percent last year. And we see that the number of packaging or the tonnages of packaging on the market with carbon black actually decreased from seventeen thousand tons to six thousand tons. And we do expect in twenty twenty three with the hundred percent malice that will be even lower. So this is effective. But why it is effective, it's because we already have solutions. So we identify all the alternatives to carbon black. And we know that it's not too costly. It's a little bit more costly than the the carbon black packaging, so it's five percent more. But the malice becomes interesting because it gives it actually equilibrates the the difference in price or in costs from packaging with carbon black from the alternatives. And then we have the third category that is penalties that are not yet effective. They are not yet effective because we do not have yet the satisfactory technical solutions for all manufacturers. So if we don't have the solutions, producers cannot switch. Okay, that's the broad overview with some some diving, but I'd be happy to to answer questions afterwards.
Great, good timing. Thank you. And we're gonna go into Q and A, so please raise your hands like Rick did. So Rick, you're you're up. And then Scott next.
Rick Hader, Murfs, Swordfish Recycle, Swordfish Consulting. I'm sorry, I can't put my video up. I'm in a very compromised area and I I don't have connectivity. But my question is, it 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 appears, and I'm sure Scott's gonna get there with this. How much of your gains in eco modulation were associated with simply transitioning away from a heavy, highly recyclable product glass to lighter products? So it it does seem that weight is overweighted. And I I'm kind of confused. If you could walk me through that, please.
Yeah, sure. No, sorry, I I should have specified the source reduction bonus is only at isomaterial. So when you do not change the material, of course. So it's only you can prove that your packaging that was in plastic is still in plastic, but lighter, basically.
So if they made a lighter bottle, a glass bottle, that would be an incentive for them.
So if you've switched from plastic to glass or from glass to plastic, it's not eligible to the bonus.
Okay, understood.
Cannot have you cannot have the bonus, but if you make your glass bottle lighter, then you can have the bonus.
Thank you very much.
We'll go to Scott, then John, Pete, and then Alex.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick, for asking. That first part was gonna be one of the things that I that I asked to be pointed out. But the other question I think is relevant as a baseline for how the system that you're describing is relevant to our work in Colorado. How many different collection streams are there in the French system? Materials that are gathered together and collected. It's not all commingled into one bin. So there's separate collection streams. And what is the baseline reuse and refill rate that you already have right now in in France?
Okay. And so the collection stream that we have is only two, actually. We have one for glass packaging that is specific. And then we have the yellow bean for all the others packaging. Okay, so we we do mix steel, aluminum, paper, cardboard, cartons and plastic packaging.
Plastic goes in the same bin as the paper and the metal?
Yes.
But not on the street, not on the
No, in the street.
Not in the depots.
No, for out of home, we do, we we are, we are currently trying to put that in place, but yes, it will be the same scheme at the end. So then it's going to sorting centers that will separate in different fractions. And we have a specific, what we call flu development with all the plastics that are not the bottles, basically, that goes into a specific sorting center and then that will separate the different resins of plastic. And for reuse, so for now, it's very low in France. We only we have less than one percent of the packaging that are reused. But we are currently working on building a harmonized and mutualized reuse scheme for France. We we will launch it next year in four regions of France. And so we hope it will actually give a way to 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 more reuse.
Right. Thank you for the question and answer, Valentine. You you're the questions are gonna be around how applicable is France, which is so far ahead and it's recycling in general to Colorado, which has really a a much less robust system. So that's where all these questions. So that's where all these questions seem to be coming. Uh, over to you, John.
Thank you, uh, I'm panelist today, but I was very curious and great presentation. Thank you for the presentation. Valentine, I wanted to ask you, I thought it was interesting that you actually calibrated the malice with the bonus. Um, would you say, and this is an assumption for sure, would you say that organizations that don't have large staffs and maybe haven't been on this path are the ones that are falling more into the malice? Or do you see any trends like that, or is it just across the board? Is there any rhyme or reason to who's performing well versus those that are not?
No, what what we can say for sure is that the one that are uh, less performing is the one where the decision making is not taking place in France or in Europe. Okay, so importers of goods that are uh, actually produced somewhere in Asia or the US or or anywhere else, it's more complicated because they they don't have really the the lever of action to change their packaging because it's a a global uh, decision making. And so it's, they 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 can do anything, basically. That's really the trend we see.
Thank you.
Yeah, just just a quick question. I I I think, I mean, we've talked about, obviously, there's differences between between France and an established program in in Colorado, just starting out. Um, uh, you've obviously been through lots of ups and downs and 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 um, positives and negatives associated with eco-modulation. Just wondering if you could speak to, you know, lessons learned that you think would be applicable to uh, to Colorado and what we should be thinking about as we move forward.
Yeah, I think you you might see that in the presentation. Uh, one of the main issue with our eco-modulation is that it's very complicated. We have a lot of different uh, ways to modulate. Uh, it necessitates a lot of work from data gathering from producers, data that they don't always have. Uh, also work on our site to verify and to adapt the bonus and malice. And uh, it's even changing now because, so we started uh, eco-modulation in in twenty eleven in France, so thirteen years ago. Um, and it was voluntary at first. Uh, and then uh, the the French government uh, started to uh, to put its own uh, eco-modulation. Uh, and so it it kind of brought some complexity, okay? We we don't have, I would say, the the right level of discussion, uh, meaning that it's just add-ons. And so there is, there is no, it's less and less readable, I would say, or readable for the producers. It's very complicated, you have a lot of different types of uh, of uh, of criteria. Um, and so it's, it, my 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 advice would really be to start uh, simple. Something that's really feasible, that's readable by the producers so that they understand the the logic and where you want to to head. Um, and then try to build on that, basically, and and try to 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 keep something that's very coherent uh, in between all the different bonuses and malices. I don't know if it actually answered your question, Peter.
Oh, that's 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 very helpful, thank you.
Alex?
Thanks, Scott, thanks for the presentation, Valentine, it's very useful. Um, just focusing on the trust you have where you have typically um, higher level of bonus payouts uh, than malice revenues coming in. Um, what what does that do in terms of financial impact to your program? And um, like, what are the, some tips you made that for for us just starting out, to also trying to manage financial impact because of that imbalance?
Yes, the the, so of course, the main issue is how do we, when we 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 put in place a bonus, it it can have a huge impact on the fee because, well, it's of course money that you you have to pay for. It's something that sometimes people tend to forget is that the bonus needs to be paid by an increased fee. Okay, so first, it means that you should find bonuses that are not too widely uh, done uh, in the country, else it's just people paying for their own bonus, so it's useless, basically. If hundred percent of people have the bonus, then it's just the fee that increase increases by the the amount of the bonus. So it's 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 not interesting. So you have to find the right criteria for the for the bonuses. Uh, and then you have, of course, to try to make assumption on uh, what will be the state of the market to try to uh, to size what the bonus will cost and to add this in the charges that in the costs that the fee will have to cover at the end. And so when you actually fix the fee, you have to know all the bonuses that you are going to put in place. Because you have to uh, to know which amount of euros or dollars you are going to uh, to pay. And so you have to to have a fee that can cover that.
That's what people.
And malices is just, sorry for the the expression, but malices are plus bonus. It's to come in in addition to the, to the the fee you have so that there is less risk.
Well, so just that, and this, I I guess a a best practice would be to understand when during fee setting, setting the base fees, we understand the level of bonuses we will have to pay out and possibly the level of uh, malices will be received. We need to have that full visibility as we determine the base fees.
Yes, of course, because the fee has to cover your costs. And so you need to understand what would be your cost.
Right.
Thank you. Caroline. There you go.
Caroline Mitchell, City of Fort Collins. Apologize, my unmute was a little slow there. Um, I have um, two questions. Um, one is, um, I I heard the focus in your presentation about only um, charging a malice when the an alternative solution has been identified. Um, I'm not clear whether that is part, is that, if that's sort of a best practice or if that is part of the system in France. And um, either way, who decides whether sort of a solution exists and and how, how is that determined?
Um, so it's not systematic. Because as you saw, we have some malices that are not efficient because we don't, we didn't found a solution. So it's not systematic and you can, you can say, okay, no, I will put a malice uh, only to raise the issue. So that that can be interesting. But the idea is going to keep it low for now. Um, so you don't penalize producer that that can do anything about it. But it means that in parallel, you have to work on R and D projects to help find the solutions. So we we do work on R and D projects to do those uh, the things. And uh, what we have in France is that we have a full governance with all our stakeholders where we can share and and we have to have their approval on the eco-modulation. Okay, so it has to be approved, of course, by us and by our uh, our shareholders. But it has also to be approved by the uh, the stakeholders. So we have what we call the uh, stakeholders committee where we share the uh, basically everything that we know on the on the co-modulation and and we make our proposal of evolution for the eco-modulation. And they can vote if they are okay with that or not. And then the last step is that the state then approves or not the eco-modulation we want to put in place. Okay, and so we have, we can have some some discussion there, uh, they have to change things and we try to change them another way, where that's kind of the debates then then that enters here and that has to be applicable, that's the main issue, that it has to be applicable.
Right, thank you.
Can I ask my second question, Scott, related to that? Um, so um, it sound, you're, you're talking about your role in doing some of that R and D work. Um, and also maybe a side question in part of this, maybe you could clarify. I don't really know exactly CTO's role within the system in France, but but the specific question is, um, it it sounds like you all do R and D work. And um, I'm assuming there is, I I'm wondering about incentives for producers or, you know, other entities um, to be doing R and D work and how you sort of balance the R and D work that you're doing versus incentivizing others and factoring that in.
So for for the specific case of malices, uh, when I I talk about R and D work, it's with the producers, of course, we we so it's basically, we we give incentive, financial incentives for those projects. So we say, okay, we have an issue, so for example, carbon black, okay? In packaging, we know it's an issue, we need to find solutions. So we say, okay, we are going to spend maybe uh, X hundred thousand uh, of euros or several millions. It depends on the 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 issue. And we are going to uh, finance half of your project to change your packaging. Okay, so all the time that your engineer are going to uh, to work on this issue, we are going to pay half of that. Uh, we can, uh, we will pay also the suppliers of of packaging to help you in this this aspect. And we are going to bring also some technical advice within the 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 steerco of the project. Okay, and and so at the end of the the those R and D project, we make a a summary of all the work that has been done and we share it with the whole ecosystem. Of course, we don't share the specific confidential details, but we share that it's feasible, did it work or not? Uh, what could be the alternatives that are on the market and 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 so on.
Great, great questions, thank you. Uh, we'll go to Rick and then Wolf.
Yes, Rick, Rick Hader, Swordfish Consulting. Um, so uh, I don't know if you opened with, uh, so I don't know if you started your your program in twenty eleven or just the eco-modulation portion of this in twenty eleven. But can you, can you give us an idea of where your recycling rate was pre-EPR and where it is today? Uh, so we have an idea of how effective the process was. And then I wanted to ask a second question that was, uh, you said the malice goes to a hundred percent at some points in time. Have you had to ban products because the malice at a hundred percent still did not mean much at the uh, at the unit level? It was fractions of pennies to the consumer and so no action was taken. Thank you.
Um, so yeah, now we started in twenty eleven, the the eco-modulation part. Uh, we started the EPR in the in France in nineteen ninety-two. So thirty years ago. Um, so yeah, eco-modulation came way, way afterwards. Uh, recycling rate, so there was no recycling for uh, all packaging but glass when we started in ninety-two. Uh, but there was some glass recycling, uh, I believe twenty percent recycling rate. And now for glass, we are at eighty-six percent recycling rate. But it's not thanks to the eco-modulation, of course, it's more thanks to the the collection system that was put in place um, for glass packaging and then the yellow bean for all the the other types of uh, of packaging.
Is is glass a second, is a, is glass a different pro? So do you have several pros, PROs?
It's the same.
Okay.
Same one. Uh, and second question, did we have to ban? No, uh, it's not not our role to ban anything, we don't have this power. Uh, so we 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 do not ban anything. But yes, some some people will keep doing what they do because it's important for them and they will pay the the higher fee. But then if the states wants to to ban it, it's their, their thing to do.
Thank you very much.
Great, Wolf.
You, yeah, Wolf Cray, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. Uh, two questions, the first one is hopefully a quick, easy one. Could you just clarify the difference between uh, bonuses and incentives?
Yes, uh, well, it's an easy one, yes. Uh, it's it's not clear. Uh, we just discovered new terms in our, in our uh, Cayer des charges. So the, what the the governments, uh, you know, we have this framework in which we we need to to work in uh, within. Uh, and so sometimes it changed terms. So what we decided to interpret, to interpret was that a bonus is a percentage of the fee. And incentives is in euro per ton. So basically, that's why we say incentives for recycled contents. It's not linked to the fee, it's only a euro per ton. So for example, if you uh, integrate uh, uh, RPT in your bottle, you will have fifty euros per tonne of recycled contents. That's it. And for the bonuses, it's really, you have eight percent bonus on your fee. So it reduces your fee by eight percent, that's the difference.
So that's that's helpful, that actually leads into my next question, which is uh, with being so new to this and going into twenty twenty-six will be year one for us for for having uh, eco-modulation rules. If you could go back to year one uh, for your program, wh-what does that look like? How do you, how do you set up the bonus percentages in a non-arbitrary way? What thoughts do you put into that? Um, sounds like you have a very robust scientific uh, methodical process that went into this. Uh, so if you are on a very, very short timeline, uh, a-any thoughts you can share with us would be incredibly valuable.
Um, okay, that's only my opinion, of course. Um, but what I would do is to start very simple because on year one, you don't have any data. Okay, so it's very difficult to to build something when you don't have any data. So uh, the, maybe to, just to give you an example, we we actually started a new uh, pro, uh, a new EPR scheme in France on uh, packaging for restaurants. Okay, so on the first year, what we said is like, is that, well, we don't have any data. So we are going first, the first thing we will do in in Eco-Design is to actually understand what's the market, what's the packaging of sold in restaurants are made of, okay? Once we have this, now we are starting in year two to put in place eco-modulation. So we are going to put in place the eco-modulation on source reduction. Because source reduction is fairly easy and we know the the amount. Then we have to be careful, uh, because we don't know who is actually going to to take a reduction action. So we don't know the amount, so we have to make guesses. And that's kind of, uh, it can be tricky, so we have to be careful. Uh, we are going to put in place the recycle content incentives as well. Uh, and um, and then once we will have the um, more data on the uh, what the packaging are made of, we are going to put in place when year two or three, uh, the malices for recycling disruptors. Because we need to understand what is the scheme that will be put in place? In what type of recycling facility is it going to go? And so what are the recycling process that will be used? And make tests to see if the packaging that we have on the market are actually going to be a disruptor or not. So we have built uh, in in France as well, we have uh, technical committees to assess recyclability of all types of material. So for example, for plastics, we have what we call the Cotrep, which is gathering CTO, is gathering the Federation for uh, plastic packaging producers. Uh, we have also the recyclers. Okay, so we have the whole value chain there and we make tests on uh, on pilot lines, pilot recycling lines to identify if, for example, aluminium in PET packaging is a problem or not. And then we classify those problematics into three colors. Is it uh, green, it's fine, is it orange? It's recyclable, but it does bring some issues to recycling, so it's better to to try to avoid it. And then red, right, so no go, it won't be recyclable. And then we put for the one that not recyclable, sometimes we put malices to say, okay, this is a strong issue. We have to get rid of it, so let's put uh, malices on that. Is it clear? So so there is definitely, I think, a gradual evolution for eco-modulation. Uh, start slow because we don't have data and then you can build on what you know from the markets and from the the actual packaging put on the market.
Right. Basing it in.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, are there any other questions at this point? Okay, well, Valentine, fabulous presentation. Um, Clinton, do I, do I let let you go for a quick one here?
I don't think I should do it, I don't know. Uh, I just wanna know about compostable packaging and how that has been. I I've read your policy framework on bio-based biodegradable and pla- compostable plastics that you put out in twenty twenty-one. So I I have that resource, but I'm I'm just curious. Briefly, can you speak to compostable packaging within your EPR and how, any um, suggestions on handling that?
Yes, um, so yes, we 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 do believe that uh, whatever the the resource that is used, so if it's uh, bio-based or 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 not bio-based, we do believe that it's through uh, first reuse and recycling that we are going to reduce generational impacts. Compostable, I'm I'm talking about plastics, okay? Compostable plastics for us is in indeed less of an interest because. Well, it just goes into CO2, the plastic that biodegrades uh makes just CO2 and water. And and that's what what we want to do. We want to try to 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 keep uh as much of the material within the loop as possible. However, bio based, of course, our conviction is that. Uh, bio based can be an interesting solution to reduce the environmental impacts of packaging. But we should work on developing recycling streams for the right bio based uh packaging. So that's kind of the way we we see it. Um, and so if we have a a good bio based material, uh, I know some some PHA, for example, are under work that may be interesting because it's. It's done by macroorganisms, uh, it can be, it doesn't need some so much surface uh at the others. Uh, then we we conducted, for example, projects with some producers to see, okay, can we recycle it? Does it work or not? And what kind of of process, what kind of outputs? So that's more approach. That's only for plastic packaging, okay, because we have all the types of packaging, for example, for tea, uh, for a coffee. Where uh compostable packaging is definitely a solution because you you might increase the composting of the product. Okay, so that's that's kind of our approach.
Thank you.
Great, okay. Um, we're now uh going to move uh over to our next speaker. And Valentine, if you're able to, I know it's early evening there. Uh, we have a public comment period. We're going to be taking a break after the next presentation that Pete's going to be providing. We'll have a quick presentation, uh, another Q and A around here. Then we'll take a five minute break, see if there are those in the audience that have. Public comments and if you're able to stay on for that, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Uh, Rick, is this related to what I just mentioned or is it a different topic?
No, it's related to what you just spoke to, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Wanted to say for the group that Valentine, this was fabulous. Having somebody who is in the in the battle, in the fight. And making this happen and and experiencing it and and sharing that with us is absolutely phenomenal. And we'd we'd love to have more of you to tell you the truth. So thank you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah, I guess we we want to thank Darla for making the connection over to Valentine, uh. And uh bringing him here today. Thank you, Darla. And thank you for your comment, Rick, and now Pete, over to you. You're on mute, Pete. I know you've talked enough in Maryland this morning.
I know. Uh, so, um, uh, just I I've got a couple of slides to go through. Um, a part of them, I think, can can uh hopefully provide a bit of discussion on on eco modulation. Um, so if we just move a slide uh forward. Uh, just just a bit of a reminder update and then I'll I'll talk just about some of the considerations as we look at uh malices and and bonuses. Our next slide. Um, so I I think as we move forward, um. You know, I think we are trying uh new ways to um. Make sure that we're communicating clearly around what we see as the base fee and what we see as uh eco modulation and and trying to differentiate the two. Um, so this table here is is just a little bit of that uh around trying to provide some additional. Uh, uh differential between what we see as the base and the and eco modulation. And I'm not gonna spend a lot of time because I think the next couple of slides also deal with this. It's again, I think we're just trying to find ways to present the information and hopefully ways that are. Um, more easy to consume uh and to understand um as we move forward. Uh, next slide. Um, so this is a bit of a play on on one of the 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 um. Uh, diagrams that we've already shared with you. Um, and and this is really about, so the base fee calculation is really, we need to understand. What is the system cost? Um, and what are the other costs uh that might be involved? So that might be education, that might be outreach. Um, uh reserves and that would potentially include uh some of the reserves that may need to take into account bonuses and malices. Uh, that uh that were just presented on as well. Um, uh, there's the pro admin cost, there's, you know, other fees potentially with uh compensating uh the department for for work that they're doing as well. So those system costs, they uh they are then taken and allocated. By material type. Um, and so we talked about this already around, you you know, this is very similar to. Um, I think that was just presented uh based on the French system, which is the supply. Uh, tons um and the cost to manage um uh that material uh through the system. Those costs then are going to, you're going to offset those costs by any any material revenues uh that you are going to have for each of the products. You're going to add in uh an allocation of those other sort of, I guess I'll call them. Uh, instead of other costs, we can call them like shared cost, system costs that are in there. Um, that then gives you a net dues by material type. And you're going to divide that then by the supply tons um by material and that'll give you a base. Uh, dues rate, so a rate per pound for each of the materials. So that's the first sort of set of steps that gives us then um those base dues. And then if we move one slide forward. Then on top of that, then there is potentially the eco modulation factors uh that we are potentially going to. Or that we are adding in uh required to add in. So there's the incentives that are going to decrease your fees. Um, and we've talked about what those uh requirements are around reductions in the amount of packaging. Innovations that enhance recyclability and commodity value. High levels of PCR content designs for reuse and refill of covered materials and high recycling and reuse rates of covered materials. And then there are three disincentives that would increase the costs uh or those uh um dues rates. And that includes uh um design and practices that increase the cost of recycling reuse or composting of covered materials. That disrupt other materials. Or that are not on the minimum recycling uh recyclables list. Uh, next slide. So those are the two factors. Now, we've tried to provide just a bit of another example here, just to sort of give you. And I know it's probably a little bit busy of a slide, but we've got five producers and they're represented. Um, uh, in material A and material B by the yellow and the purple um 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 bars. Um, uh, so there's five producers, they're paying the same base rate. Uh, for both materials A and B. Now again, when we talk about how this will be implemented. We're talking about probably seventy plus material category or material types. And then we'll be talking about thousands of producers. So this will get much more crowded as we think about how it gets uh potentially implemented. The eco modulation factors will either increase the costs uh for each of the materials and you can see that with. Um, uh, the red uh line, so that is. Uh, that is malices uh that are potentially getting paid. Uh, and uh, and then you have. Uh, bonuses that are going to potentially reduce the producer's costs. Um, and I apologize, this is a bit crowded. I I think when it went into the Google thing, it got a bit crunched. So it's not as easy to follow the graphic as it was when I inserted it, but uh, um, that's besides the point. So there is lots of movement that's going to happen on this, but this is generally, again, how these fees will or how the bonuses and malices will work. Um, as Valentine mentioned, um, you know, there is, uh, I think, uh, a general, um. Uh, you know, generally in most programs that do have eco modulation that pay out, um, the bonuses generally exceed the malices. Um, uh, so that is something we need to keep in mind that that's there is a potential for an impact on on the budget. And I think, you know, that'll fit in for a number of reasons. Um, um. You you know, uh, providing oversight over over malices and and auditing them can be sometimes more difficult to do. Uh, there's less incentives for somebody to put their hand up that I have a uh something that should be penalized than than a bonus potentially that might be available. Um, all that being said, you know, it as we look at these bonuses and malices, we need to think about what the impacts are. Because that'll impact uh the budget and and potential stability within the uh within the program. Next slide. So, um, these are just core considerations that I think we've we've spoken about to some degree already. Um, do um and to what degree do the base fees take into account some of the. Uh, eco modulation requirements. Um, so. As mentioned, when we talk about some of these areas, there are potentially um some degree of acknowledgement within the base fees of changes in. Um, uh, you know, the amount of material it's being supplied, there are some recognitions within the current structure. And we'll speak to that in the next slide. Should eco modulation factors be phased? Um, so do we look at? Uh, uh timelines around how we might phase these materials in? Do we focus on certain material types? Um, and again, I think as we look at this, we're looking at, are there priorities? Uh, in Colorado that should be focused on, priorities potentially as well for producers. Uh, are there fairness and equity considerations that need to be set, taken into account, things like data readiness and the availability of 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 data ahead of time? Um, how do we determine the measures against which eco modulation factors are set? What needs to be reported and what is there, uh, what is the access to the information? And what is necessary for uh the pro to verify the producer, what the producer is actually reporting? Uh, next slide. So I've tried to just provide a a bit of um a a a table to sort of walk through as we start looking at each of the. Um, um, uh, each of the eco modulation factors that need to be considered. Uh, this first slide deals with malices. Um, so the first malice is design and practices that increase the cost of recycling. Reusing or composting uh covered materials. Um, so at a very base level, I think we look at it and start to say, okay, well, how do we, how do we start to think through this? How do we define? As it says, it's not only, we're not only talking about designs, but we're talking about practices. So what are we defining as practices? Um, reuse materials are not necessarily included in uh covered materials. Because covered materials are focused on a single use products. Um, so how do we think through potentially impacts? Um, on uh the costs uh of or increased costs related to design or practices that may impact. Uh, reuse, um, uh reusable products. Then we look at potentially, how do we measure? So how can we measure um designs and practices that can increase uh uh costs? Certainly, there are lots of industry guidelines that are out there. I've included uh APR. Um, as an example, so there are examples from APR of uh design functions that potentially impact. Um, uh, impact uh uh the recyclability of a product. Um, uh, we can look at, there are. Uh, to some degree, some other examples for other materials. Uh, so as we look at. Um, uh, glass, there, uh, you know, and and maybe Scott can correct me if I'm wrong on this. There's not necessarily a lot of guidance materials out of the U S on on glass, but there certainly is in some other jurisdictions. Uh, the same as as metal. Um, you know, uh, there's, I think, certainly a fair amount that's been done around plastic wraps on uh on on um. On uh beverage cans and things like that. Um, but how do we make sure that we can look at what are those considerations around those different types of? Um, design features that that may uh hinder or increase the costs of of recycling? And then, you know, what is the consideration? Should we have any consideration around around phasing of that? Should we consider all materials or are we just focused on a subset of materials at the initial? And again, getting to that question of, are we starting simple or are we starting more comprehensive? Um, and again. Whatever we decide on, so if we look at some of the features that are typical in in factors that may impact or increase the cost of recycling. We look at things like coloring additives, uh, potentially the size of labels and the and the and the the composition of labels. The size of the actual uh package itself and how easy it is it it is to sort out. Um, and so as we start to look at that, if we are going to set a a fee, uh, a a modulation factor. We need to make sure that we're collecting uh the reporting data uh from producers. Uh, and getting that information into the system so that we can start to measure against that and and set those fees. Um, and again, the last feature I added for this was just simply, does the vase basically include? Uh, um, some modulation? So in this case, for designs and practices that increase the cost of recycling. It does to some extent. There are cost to manage in index by material type will measure some of this. Again, not necessarily to the degree that um may be necessary, but it does include obviously easier to recycle materials. Um, like the chart that, um. That Valentine uh had added around uh PET versus PVC. Uh, that that cost uh to manage is certainly going to be reflected uh based on on the cost to. Uh, collect, uh, sort uh and process uh those materials as well as the end market value of them. So maybe I'll just stop at that, at least first example, Scott. I mean, I don't know if we want to go through each and every one of these. Um, but I'm sort of open to the group in in talking through each of these.
And you do have one more slide on incentive factors and that we end.
And we follow the same practice, uh, Scott, for both of these. Um, so. Uh, again, I'm happy to sort of go through, but I think what I'm trying to show is just some of the thinking as to. As we start um moving these forward and we start working on what exactly this is going to look like. These are some of the questions that are coming forward to us to make sure that we. You know, establish something that meets some of the the uh fee principles that we had set out uh earlier around clarity, around transparency. Around uh um fairness and equity um as we set these fees. And Scott, I think you had your hand up.
Scott the Fife, go ahead.
Yep.
Un unmute, please.
Sorry, Scott the Fife Glass Packaging. I I did, because I thought you wanted me to say something, then I got confused whether you meant me or 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 or.
The other guy.
I always want your feedback. Or the third or the other guy.
Certainly on on, um. You you know, guidelines, industry guidelines on problematic features associated with glass packaging. I would, I would, I would love your your feedback on that specifically.
Let me see if I can help a little bit, um. It it would be my recommendation that you start simple. The Colorado is nowhere near, I mean, I was trying to make this point in my questioning of the France and Oregon. Systems, I mean, we're just at the Colorado is at a different place in its in its recycling, it's sustainable materials management journey, not to. Say it's bad, you know, it's great that we're doing this, right? But, um. What they're talking about with malice fees and things like that in each material category, I think is much more important to start off with. You want the the, you know, let the plastics guy, you know, folks and the paper folks and the can folks and the glass folks figure it out within their material categories. First, before you start comparing a lot of different material categories and forcing or trying to force. Um. Material switching. You know, for producers that are trying to produce for the broad U S market and not just one state. Um. But in the glass world, it's really. There's never really been a design issue for recycling. It it's the over decoration and 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 the, you know, it's usually in the cosmetics field and sometimes in the spirits world. We've never really had too much of a problem in the in the non alcoholic beverage, beer and or wine. Space with labels or something like that. Every once in a while, somebody uses, you know. Something that's closer to cement to put their label on their glass and so that the the label doesn't come off easily. And there was uh and like, there's one or two occasions where if you. If you paint on the bottle rather than label the bottle, then you know, the whatever. I think a long time ago, there was a brand that that paints their label on that. Used a mineral oxide in the paint that. You know, created some trouble in the recycling stream, but that's that's. We're largely a decade or so past all of that. we're largely a decade or so past all of that now. They mean the things like the I don't mean to call out a brand, but the one that I know of the best is the Grolsch. The the reclosable. It's got a ceramic lid on with a rubber stopper and a metal closure thing. Grolsch beer was a, you know, largely those bottles are made for refill in Europe, but some of them, you know, some of them get exported over to the United States and and things of that nature. And that's some of that closure stuff makes it hard to recycle. You want less metal.
Right, so Scott, if I could jump in, you did start with start simple and I'm wondering, and that was something Valentin also recommended here, and I'm wondering if you could articulate what that means to you in the context of Colorado for the eco modulated fees? What what would what does that mean? But and I understand it's the sort of the these very, I don't know, outliers on the Grolsch can or whatever, where there's clearly some problems where there would be a malice is
Well, I think.
referring to or something else?
Yeah, I I think if you keep it within the material categories as the material person here, and I try to talk to the other material groups because they're not necessarily represented in a voice, but I mean, Scott is here and paper is here, but some of the other packaging people do call me from every once in a while. You know, it's hard enough to to, you know, compare things within a material group. You can make lighter weight bottles, you can make cans that are less, you know. When I started in this, you know, role, one of the things that the I heard a lot of recyclers complain about is cans that change colors because they were cold and that, you know, there's extra stuff on the material on the can that you know, can contaminate multi material streams are harder and things like that. So I would start in the simpler space comparing packaging to other packaging within its family rather than across families.
Great. Thank you. Are there other comments? Pete's looking for feedback. You've heard an awful lot here. It might be some of the first times you're hearing about the details of eco modulation. We are hearing phased, maybe start start small, consider where Colorado is versus, you know, Oregon or France or other places. But what does that mean? What what? Like Pete's laid out a couple of examples here and some considerations. And I'm wondering if you feel like you have enough understanding or just ask some questions around that to get us to that place because CAA is looking to put together, you know, a proposal eventually. And that's where we're headed. Or are you all pooped out and ready for a break and ready to go into post consumer recycled content?
So, yeah, sorry. Barrett's got his hand up.
Barrett?
Yeah, I'll jump in. Barrett Jensen with Waste Connections. So with that, I guess I'm having a little bit of a hard time understanding the statutory requirements. So I I agree with the concept of of starting small. I agree with starting small and really a lot of aspects of this program. And just kind of, you know, incrementally going from there to make it as simple as possible in the beginning. But statutorily, don't we? Don't we have requirements that we have to have these in place? Or how much flexibility do we really have? Can we really go back and or can we go in and say, hey, you know, maybe we want to collect data for five years and then implement it? I just, I don't understand the statutory requirements of what we can and cannot do. So Wolf or or Darla or or anyone, if you have any clarification on that, that'd be appreciated.
Wolf, Darla?
Yeah, I I can jump in Darla Aaron C P G. The pro is required to begin implementing the eco modulation at the start of the program. But the statute is not specific in how they do that. And so a graduated approach or tiered approach certainly is not outside of the context of the statute, Barrett.
Okay, perfect. Because I thought I saw in the beginning that we had to have five beginning the slides, we had to have five like bonuses and three malices. Was that was that our was that our slides for Colorado?
Mm hmm. Yep.
So so I mean, I would I would read it more to say, Barrett, like, we have to have these things in place. The question is, do they apply to all types of material? How detailed do we go in into malices and incentives? You know, as as CTO mentioned, Valentin mentioned, I mean, they're fairly broad. I mean, there's some areas here that are different than than in in France. So I mean, if we just move one slide forward, I'll just provide another example of of one which around refill, if we can, yeah, somebody's can move one slide forward. Oh, perfect. So you know, I think there's some interesting questions I think we have around refill. So what's different in Colorado than France is is refillable packaging is not captured in in the legislation. There's potentially reporting, I guess, that may need to be, but they're not. I think I think we would look at it to say that I don't think they have a a need to pay fees into the system. So how might that work? Are we providing a bonus to a company that might be using refillable a product when they're not paying any fee at all? So I think there's some questions around some of these areas as we start to think towards how are we implementing this? That, you know, I think it would be helpful to get feedback as we start to think this through from the group.
Clinton?
Pete, I was just, yeah, sorry, Clinton Sander A1 Organics. Pete, I was curious, like with within this within the malice. Like the way you're looking at this with, from my perspective, with compostables. I mean, are you looking for the feedback that potentially the type of compostable material that the product is created from could have, you know, compostability challenges to certification types if it's BPI certified or CMA certified or not? You know, associated with food diversion or not? Is there a potential for type of material from the generator source that's going to increase the volume of compostable material based on the generator type versus less material because it's a different type of generator that's not going to use as many? Like, are these all is like those, like, you know, you know, like problematic materials, like where compostables are? This is not packaging, but it's a great example. Let's make compostable diapers. They have to take apart in order to compost them versus a paper towel that's brown, that's certified, easily understandable and recognized. Is that what you need from the compostable side of the world? And compost management?
Yeah, so so compostables is probably a good example when I think of a phased approach. And partly I look at compostables partly because there's very little data out as to how much compostable materials have been supplied into any market. So, you know, the only one I know in North America right now that's capturing it is Ontario and Ontario. It's about point two percent. So we we just don't have a good idea. So if we're going to structure a malice or a bonus without understanding exactly exactly what that might mean, that potentially then plays a little bit with investments, you know, that we we would, I think, look to be making as part of 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 the program to ensure that compost facilities can better process materials in in Colorado. So yeah, I mean, I guess I guess as Valentin said, we could that can just float the boat that can increase the amount that is being paid for for the base fee for compostables. But again, start at a starting at a point where we don't actually know how much material is actually supplied into Colorado for compostables is it makes it difficult. Other materials, we have a better sense of. But because it's such a small part of the overall packaging stream, it is difficult for us to know.
Great, thank you. Go Caroline, Rick and Nicole.
Mitchell, City of Fort Collins. So I'm looking at some of the questions that were asked here for feedback and I think obviously there are just so many details within every one of these. And I also want to share appreciation for, I feel like this chart is more in line with some of the additional information that I was requesting in the last meeting. And so I also just want to share appreciation for hearing that and for you know, providing some of this more detailed information to support conversation and more understanding. In the the questions that you all had asked around, do the base dues need to take into account some of the requirements? I'm assuming that means as Valentin was talking about the base dues taking into account the likely bonuses and malices that will be charged in the system. And if that's what the question is asking, I'm assuming the answer is yes. And the the phasing of the eco modulations, I I also wanted to share a lot of appreciation for Valentin's presentation. I think hearing from his experience and is very helpful. And I appreciated his recommendation of making sure you have at least a year to just gather information. And so for the for the sense of kind of bringing the conversation forward, I'm wondering about having if we were to identify likely eco eco modulation factors that we would you know, sort of forecast. If we say, if we if we use this time between now and the program plan to or sorry, if we use the initial time to identify likely bonuses and malice criteria. And then in year one, require the producers to collect data that would relate to those particular bonuses and malices and assume the activity for year one is gathering data. Maybe then you need six months of of analyzing the data, making decisions, communicating them. And so maybe the initial ones could start at year 1.5. But maybe just as a, I'm sure there are lots of different possibilities out there, but just sort of translating what we're hearing into some potential paths forward, hearing that maybe we have some flexibility. And I also appreciated the perspective of being able to increase malices over time for products where there is a clear alternative and the initial level of malice is not seeming to make any impact. I appreciate that flexibility as well. So I'll leave it there.
So thanks for putting a clear proposal on the table here. All right. Let's go to Rick, Nicole, and then Wolf. And then we're going to pause here because I we're going to take a, you know, five minute break. Get public, see who wants to give public comment, come back, have that. And then we have post consumer recycled content and we've got a little ways to go. So all right, Rick.
Yeah, Rick Hader consulting Murfs, I'm all high and Caroline on this one. I I don't think you run to this because you already mentioned to us that from a budget perspective, you're concerned that model is that more bonuses are paid than malices and it's by a great percentage. So year one, you're already trying out if your fee structure is in a good place. If you're if you're trying to fast track eco modulation, year one, year two, you could find yourself in a bad position. And then so I'm with Caroline. I think this should be a tiered kind of approach. Maybe the question would be, do we attack malice first or we to go bonuses first or how do we flow into this? But I think your budget is the most important thing that we need to think about. And I haven't heard if you fail to meet, let's say you run out of money. How do I get paid as a Murph? Am I in a bad position? So I'm a little concerned about your budget. I want to make sure that that's solid. Rick Hader, thank you.
But I can just quickly respond. So, Rick, I think, you know, we'll need to, we'll need to make sure that we've got that covered in the sense of making sure that we've got a robust enough reserve to manage potentially you know, unexpected costs as part of as part of operating. So that's something certainly we need to we need to be making sure we're thinking about as as we move as we move forward.
Yeah, great points. Nicole?
Hey, Scott, thank you. At least Scott Cassell was chatting me that it I'm having a back and forth with Scott DeFife in the in the chat that maybe I could clarify my
Yeah.
speaking up. But I was trying to make a point in the chat that that just because Oregon and Colorado are in different places with respect to our recycling systems does not mean that we could not harmonize around bonus for life cycle evaluation disclosure. I've heard several times in the conversation here the need for information early on in order to devise an eco modulation approach and incentivizing evaluation and disclosure that is done according to a strict method that limits the ability of the analyst to predetermine the results. That's going to generate a lot of information that you can use to further refine your eco modulation approach. Otherwise, you are forced to operate in a somewhat murky realm of belief that attributes will deliver on reduced environmental impacts. And our research shows that in many cases that it just isn't the case. They the two don't correlate. So I would encourage you to consider adding in an incentive for evaluation and disclosure using Oregon's something close to Oregon's rules, proposed rules as the method for those evaluations.
Wolf, unless yours is in response to Nicole, which it probably isn't, I I might go to Scott for a little ping pong back and forth here just for a minute. So if you can just hold your question, Scott DeFife.
And because I was responding in the chat, I'll respond for the group as well. Look, LCA was considered during the legislative debate on the Colorado bill and and not included very specifically. It has been in other states. I my response in the chat was that as far as gathering information, that's great. But as far as assessing fees right out of the bat, does it? It seems premature. We could spend a whole day debating LCAs.
Yeah.
Which is not the course.
More discussion to be had here. And that's why we have people from different places to give you things to think about here. So thank you, Nicole, for that and Scott for your comment and over to Wolf.
Wolf Creo C D P H E. I just want to go back very quickly to Caroline and Barrett's question about what's required. So there is criteria in the statute that specifies what needs to be in the program plan or plan proposal, which is due on February of 2026, and it does include eco modulation factors. So what we've got there in the, you know, five incentives and three malices does need to be addressed in the plan proposal, but I think that's why it's important. We're having these discussions and and learning more about how directly that gets applied, how complex that is, how much of a of a factor or percentage that'll be applied. So again, just to call out the like, we need to see that criteria evaluated and incorporated from the get go in the plan for the board to review. But at the same time, it doesn't directly clarify exactly to what extent, which gives a little bit of flexibility as far as like the percent impact. And on that, I do also think it's important to factor in. Not only do we have that issue in the plan proposal, we do have the rulemaking process that has to be done by 2026, which also factors in eco modulation, which is another opportunity to modify. And at that point, we will still have very limited data. And then the third issue to consider is that after the second year of the program, CAA needs to submit an annual report. And in that annual report, CAA might propose amendments to the plan, which would be the final plan at that point. And that really seems like probably the best time where we would actually have a full set of data to evaluate to look at modifications to eco modulation going forward. So just big picture, yes, it needs to be addressed from the get go, but there are opportunities to modify, evolve and improve as we move throughout the program.
Thanks for that clarification. All right, I'm going to seem seeing no other hands. I think Nicole and Wolf, your your hands are still up from before your questions, I believe. So we're going to now take a five minute break and hold on one second, please. Five minute break and hold on one second, please. All right, um. So, all right, so I am going to now turn it over to Brandon, uh who's going to um for the first public comment. Period um and for the technical work session, Brandon.
Thank you, Scott. Uh if you're interested in providing public comment or asking a question on the topic of eco modulation. Please submit your name and organization in the chat, we're gonna call on attendees in the order that those requests were received. Uh since we have limited time, we're only gonna allow for two minutes for each comment. And if you have a question, your question and answer period is gonna be moderated based on the total number of individuals in the queue. So we can make sure that everyone has an opportunity to participate. Uh Scott, did we want to do the public comment period before or after the break?
Uh I'm gonna suggest the break now because we haven't had one and it's pretty late here. So if that's okay with everyone, let's take a five minute break and we'll come back with the public comment, thank you. Okay, uh so welcome back here, um I I think that's highly suggestive music. If you didn't think you needed to take a bio break uh before that music, you probably had to. With all the rainwater coming down, so um we're back here and now we're gonna hand it over to Brandon for the public comment.
Thank you, Scott, our first public comment or question is gonna come from Gary Cohen. Uh Gary, if you could please unmute, say your affiliation and either ask your question or provide your comment.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, hi, this is Garrett Cohen, Supply One. And uh I appreciate the opportunity to speak, I am a with Supply One as a manufacturer of packaging materials. And I am specifically a food packaging specialist and I uh wanna concur, I wanna uh agree with Rick. Uh Valentin's uh presentation was fantastic, um eco modulation. Is very important to the packaging industry, uh specifically because. As the producers look to go ahead and reduce their fees, many off uh very often, they're gonna turn to their packaging suppliers. Uh for advice on how to do that, and I would like to just provide an example of Valentin. Uh the uh the comments you gave about about France, I actually was talking with a uh one of my film producers last week. Who is in Europe and he was sharing with me an example of how a French food processor. Came to them about a year ago and said, hey, we would like you to go ahead and engineer a specific new film for us, that's. Half the thickness, yet providing the same type of material or same type of protection for the food. And uh Caroline, your your uh question about R and D. Uh this was a real life example that I just actually put the dots together today that they worked together. Uh the producer, the the food processor and my supplier. Uh to come up with a film that actually reduced the thickness of the film and obviously. Uh help to incentivize uh the the whole thing, so that was very, very well done and and that's a real life example. And and Valentin, just my my last question or I have a question is uh with flexible films and hard to recycle films, I know Eastman. Uh has uh or has the intentions of building a chemical recycling plan, and I don't mean to put you on the spot. But is hard to recycle plastics part of the plan with Eastman in France, if you could perhaps talk to that, thanks guys.
Um yes, uh sure, so actually we 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 currently are building uh three new or. Kind of three new streams uh for recycling packaging. We'll have a a new recycling stream by the end of the year for uh polystyrene packaging. We will have one for uh PET and that's the one where uh Eastman was selected uh in our call for tender. But it's only for rigid PET for now. Uh we are uh for flexible packaging currently uh working with uh other players on paralysis. And trying to build a recycling stream uh more for uh polyolefins. Um so the complex flexible packaging you are talking about uh based on PET. Um no, it will the 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 idea is more to to work on eco design towards uh polyolefin. Uh flexible packaging, so either PE would be the best choice because you you will still have mechanical recycling. But you can also go towards PP or a mix of uh PE and PP that will go into into paralysis. I don't know if I was clear.
Brandon, uh do we have a second? Thank you, Val- Valentin for answering the question.
Yeah, thank you, Valentin, and thank you, Gary. I'm gonna go ahead and mute you, Gary, we're gonna go next to Chris Pichay. Chris, if you could please unmute, say your affiliation and either provide your comment or ask your question.
Hi, I'm Chris Pichay, I work with the R P M E Co Service Provider. Sorry about that. So we recycled agri container fertilizer, pesticide and automotive container HDPE. And uh I I just um I wanna come back with uh with the CTO and the Valentin comment uh presentation. And Gary's comment just later, uh again, I I find very interesting uh the the technology side, so. When you address a new market or a specific um. Uh plastic or glass, just to know like what kind of technology it's out there and available for those producer. I think that's the base uh of uh trying to find the malus and uh the equal fee, so I find that very interesting. Knowing as in the HDP that we can do a uh a bottle with a hundred percent of PCR. Either in a good food grade or industrial grade, and we don't see too many on the market right now. Um also, um. Yeah, so again, uh with again with someone uh from the last, I think uh brought up uh an example that uh glass is glass and plastic is plastic. I think that I'm I'm fine with that and I think I agree with that also, um this uh. The world of plastic and HDP, it's wide, same for all others commodities, so. And uh I think we can uh work on our fields, that'd be that'd be awesome. And um I believe also, I wanna say also that I think Peter and um and. And what you bring in uh towards the the Malu and uh the fees, uh I think that you're in the right way. And uh just taking a note of the technology that's out there and doing more research about it, I think that that's a way to go, thank you all.
Thank you, Chris. Uh we don't have any more members of the audience in the queue, so I'll go ahead and I'll pass it back to you, Scott.
Hey, thanks, uh before I move on, Valentin, I know we I asked you to stay for a little bit to have any last comments um here. Um and of course, you're welcome to stay on for the PCR content uh conversation as well.
Thank you very much, Scott, thank you everyone for the the invite and. We are, we stay at your disposal if you have further further questions.
Great, you may be hearing from some folks, okay, take care, thank you again. Okay, um so. Let me get back to the screen here and we're now on to another topic, we have a little less than an hour. Um on post-consumer recycle content and I'm going to now turn it over to our next speaker. Uh John Cataro- Catarano, uh Director of Sustainability for of uh Packaging and Product Stewardship. At Curic Dr Pepper and John, I hope I pronounced you right, your name right.
Close enough, I've been called way worse, so thank you very much, thanks so much for having me today, it's great to see some some names and folks that I haven't seen in some time. Um I've been with KDP for about six months, but before then I was with Nestle for thirty one years. Uh Doller had read our corporate sustainability report that we just published and. She um you know, reached out to our organization and asked if somebody would come on and speak to some of the recycling. Uh the PCR content work that we've been doing, so I graciously agreed. I know she wanted to make sure we hit three things today and I don't have a lot of slides, so I'm hoping to make this more of a discussion, I'll field whatever questions I can. Um just for some proprietary and confidentiality, I might not get too deep or granular, so I'll try and stay high level and fair to my company. Uh but I'll do my best to to answer questions, uh Doller hit on a couple of things, she wanted to know about. How KDP calculates and calibrates some of its content and tracks it, measures it. So we hope, I hope we'll get to that, um we'll talk through it, some best practices about developing a roadmap, I've done that quite a few times in my career. So I hope I can give you some context there, and then the other one was how do we maybe harmonize some of the. The PCR expectations across some of the other EPR states and and even what's happening. Uh across the US and I can tell you on that one. Uh minimum content requirements are probably your best friend in doing some of that kind of organically. So let's go to the first slide and just show you a little bit about some of our corporate sustainability goals. The ones I put the blue box on are the ones that I'm responsible for and work closely on on a regular basis, so the first one, they are one hundred percent packaging. Recyclable or compostable, uh we're at ninety five percent through twenty twenty three and still making some progress there. Um the use of thirty percent post-consumer recycle content across the portfolio, I think this is the one that that got Doller's attention and. We're at twenty seven percent there, I'll talk a little bit more about that one in a bit. Um twenty five percent across the plastic portfolio. Uh and remember, this is twenty twenty three numbers, so there's already been some great progress even on top of this that we just won't report until. The middle of next year, uh and then achieve twenty percent virgin plastic reduction. Across our packaging portfolio, and we do that a lot of different ways, we do that through uh utilizing our pet. We do that through source reduction, anytime you're doing an art pet project, you also want to look at, hey, can I make that preform a little bit lighter? Is there some plastic that I can reduce, right? Uh also fit for purpose packaging. And another way to reduce uh your virgin plastic, you know, uh content is is going to different packaging formats completely. Um and plastic is very often a great solution for for consumer packaging. But if you know a little bit about our company or seen some of the news recently, we just released uh something called K rounds, it's gonna go into beta testing this year. And that's a plastic free and aluminum free coffee pot. Uh that's a compressed coffee that won't use any of the plastic at all, so you can really reduce your virgin plastic. By doing several different things and we have done those here at KDP and and certainly KDP has, I won't take too much credit just being here six months. You could go to the next slide. Um we talk a lot about PCR and how we get there, but I would be remiss not to mention the pre-competitive collaboration. That's been going on for several years here, KDP has already invested forty three million dollars to support the circular economy. Uh we're a founding um very active in CAA, as some of my friends on this call know. Uh I was actually on the board of CEA, CAA with Nestle and when I came to KDP, I still participate, but we have Charlie. Who chairs the CAA, so very active there, but we've done a lot of the voluntary stuff in prior years, we've worked very closely with the recycling partnership. We were one of the formation founders of the Polypropylene Coalition, if you remember a few years ago. Polypropylene came out underneath that sixty percent threshold that you need. To have to to claim recyclability or ask your customers to recycle the packaging. Uh and we came in and and supported that, you can see thirteen million dollars uh and giving forty six mil- forty six million people access to recycling. For polypropylene, so that's work, I I know a lot of folks at KDP, myself and and anybody in the industry should feel really good about. Uh we also been very involved in this ABA, every bottle back, and this is a. And these things all contribute to PCR, because if you don't do this, you're not gonna get the PCR, so ABA, every bottle back. I remember in my prior life seeing this and being jealous that Coke Pepsi and Curic Dr Pepper actually joined forces. And I thought that was really interesting because those were for to see a commercial of three companies that are really competitors. Working together to move something forward was was really tremendous, I was always very fascinated with that. Uh and this is done very well, seven hundred and fifty million additional pounds of plastic over the next ten years.
If I could just jump in uh quickly here, the uh the interpreters are having a hard time keeping up with you here, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's very clear uh and ve- very informative, but if you could slow it down just a little bit here, that would be greatly appreciated.
Doll told me I only had five or ten minutes and I really can't talk about this stuff for my five or ten minutes, so, okay, I'll slow it down a little bit, my pleasure. Uh we also do a lot in Canada, uh and we have a team up in Canada and we play a very active role with the with the EPR. And also the PRO in Canada, so um you can see this voluntary pre-competitive collaboration. So, um, you can see this voluntary pre-competitive collaboration work is extremely important. I think a lot of big companies and great companies are involved here and small companies. Uh, but this has really been a part of what I think sets up for us really well to perform well in EPR. Um, and all of those goals and commitments that we've made also are gonna parlay well now. You could go to the last slide. I think there's one more.
Okay, and I won't cut you off. You can.
No, you're good. You're good. Please cut me off. And then we're gonna have a little discussion after this. So, uh, transforming packaging, and this is the number that I know caught the attention of Dollar. So, you know, one of the things she wanted me to talk about a little bit was really some best practices on how to build a packaging roadmap. And I would say it's gotta be very cross, uh, collaborative, very cross-functional. So picture R and D procurement and corporate sustainability. What does corporate sustainability and, and government affairs bring to the table? Kind of the landscape of what's happening on the policy front? And what are the regulatory requirements? So you can stay on the shelf with your packaging, right? So bringing that into R and D and then drawing up your factory action plans on various projects. Um, and then bringing it also back to other functions in the organization, right? You think, you think procurement, R and D and corporate sustainability. I would say those are the three big legs of the stool. But then you have to think about, well, how do we make sure we get the best value out of this, right? Because sometimes recycled content can actually cost a little bit more and sometimes it's around the same, but you know, we, we battle that. That's a reality. But how do you get them, the best value proposition? And when we talk in, in the procurement world, often you hear about best costs or save money and cost, cost, cost. And that's very, very important. But we do have to start to shift that mindset and think about best value. What's the best value? Because this brings value and if we're not talking about it, we're not promoting it, we're leaving some value out on the table. Um, when we work with recycled plastic, for example, PET, uh, and to get to one of Dollar's, uh, asks here, you know, how do we track and trace it? We, there's a lot of different ways. And I can tell you one thing, data is becoming more and more important, especially as we talk about EPR. And how are we gonna track all of this packaging that goes into a very specific state now? It's not over my entire portfolio. I gotta get very myopic. I gotta be able to tell you exactly what went into Colorado, exactly what went into Oregon. So there's a lot of great work going on even with us right now to improve those capabilities. How you've done it before is you've done it a lot through what we call goods receipts, right? What is my, how much, how much PCR did I buy? How much virgin did I buy? If I bought a million pounds of each and I blended that material together, then I have a fifty percent content. You also wanna have some traceability out of your supply chain. And I think one thing that gets understated sometimes, or maybe is under-realized, is really all of these different complexities. Because you could have scenarios where you ship something into a state, but there's a distribution center and then in turn it might end up in Colorado. So how do you figure that part out? So you gotta also work with your material handling and your inventory management to understand where products and packaging is going. Um, so I think on the, on the PET, for example, polyethylene terephthalate, very, very straightforward, very scientific weight and measures. When we talk about PCR and the other packaging, like aluminum, glass and cardboard, it's really having a quality procurement team work very closely with the suppliers. Uh, and I know these suppliers and some of these other packaging formats are getting more and more questions about how much recycled content is in that package, right? We know New Jersey has a minimum content requirement on glass starting this year. That's gonna have to be reported for next year at ten percent, right? So that is very important to work with your supplier on these other items. But if you're manufacturing something yourself, just to have good internal tracking documentation and really evolving, and I would say more intelligent automated data. And when I say automated, I'm trying to get people away from doing these very cumbersome jobs of bringing all data together and trying to figure it out. Because honestly, even though we can have some Herculean efforts there, there's also a lot of, it, it's prone to mistakes. You can look at stuff like that sometimes and continue to find small errors. Nothing, you know, nothing, you know, with any malice, but when you're triangulating all this data manually, it gets tricky. Uh, and I think it can be prone to mistakes, so you have to be overly careful. Um, I hope that answers some of what you wanted, Dollar, on, on some of the how. Um, I think that's the last slide I had. If you go to the next one, it should be questions. Um, and let's have a conversation. What questions do you have?
Great. Thank you very much, John. And let's open it up to questions. You gotta switch your mind from eco-modulated fees to post-consumer recycle content. Two of my favorite topics.
Go ahead, Alex.
Uh, oh, okay. Didn't see you there, Alex. Please, go ahead.
Uh, hey, John, thanks for the, uh, useful information. Um, just a, a question, um, relating to fees and eco modulation in somewhat, um, in a sense. Um, as a producer, and you're heavily focused on, um, acquiring PCR content in your packaging, um, is it easy for you to actually trace, um, the products being sold in each market and the level of PCR in those products? Cause as you know, you, you would be likely reporting your supply into each state separately. And if each state has its own eco modulation criteria for PCR, are you able to actually track and trace that and report it out, um, accurately?
Yeah, good question. One of the ways to simplify some of that is if you look at our recycled content in our PET, for example, we went across all of the core products. We went across all of the Snapple products in the sixteen to twenty ounce bottles. We didn't do it in a large format. And we went across all of the buy bottles, right? So one of the things you have to also think about as you integrate PCR, I believe, is the simplicity, right? Is it easier to do it over a brand or a format? Or do I try and spread twenty percent across the entire portfolio, right? And if I can go a hundred sometimes, that might be easier than going fifty-fifty, right? Cause now I have to have two silos, dosing equipment and all the other complexities. But you do need better quality sometimes when you go a hundred. And that's gonna be another part of the conversation, probably a different presentation about how do you get the right quality to be able to use a hundred percent? So, uh, one of the things that Dollar and I talked briefly about is, you know, when we look at u- utilizing recycled content, I sometimes think we spend so much time talking about just food grade. And that, that might sound a little self-serving, because that's the, that's the area I'm in. And I think it's important there, but I think it also can play a very vital role. We talk about the circular economy as a whole to play PCR into other materials, including what's inside your supply chain. Whether it be pallets or totes or secondary packaging, tertiary packaging. And there's a little bit more liberties there to do things with other materials like polyolefins, uh, HDPE, polypropylene, that you can't quite do the same with PET. And I know we have emerging technologies that are helping us evolve to get there. But PET has had a forty-year head start, so we can do things with PET that we just can't do with some of the other materials. I hope that answered your question.
Um, yeah, to, to an extent, John. Um, yeah, I just, just running like if you know that you, your distribution warehouse is distributing product to Colorado, Oregon, um, and you know generally the supply going each, are you able to, to like,
Yeah, yeah.
The part going to Oregon has this much PCR, the, the other shipment has this much PCR.
Well, well, one of the things you, you know, when, when, and one of the things that Dollar asked about too is how do you harmonize, right? So when we look at minimum content requirement in California, which has been going since like seven, two thousand nineteen, right? I thi- I think KDP performed at about a twenty-three to twenty-five percent there, right? The goal is fifteen. So we come in at a number over. Now, I don't, you know, what I do across my portfolio, I really, I'm, I'm already harmonized, right? Because I can't be so pointed with getting products just into California are gonna have recycled content. If you think about PFAS laws, right? There's eleven different states for PFAS laws. There's not eleven different specs. You go to the highest bar and you hit that and you're gonna fall in line on the rest of them, right? So I think once you, and I think what I said earlier as I opened was the minimum content requirements. You know, you have Washington State that had fifteen percent expectation this year uh, for the first time. You have California that's at fifteen. You have New Jersey that's at ten for glass and, and plastic. And they do it across other than just beverage bottles, right? They do it across a wider variety of packaging. Um, when you think about that, that becomes your bar in a way. So what I sell into Colorado, for the most part, is gonna look very similar to what's potentially sold in California. And I realize every company might do some things differently. If you have a very myopic supply chain where you can point things in a, in a very deliberate way, that might work. But often you wanna be able to meet the bar at all scenarios.
Thank you, Alex. Yeah, thanks, Alex. We'll take one more question here because we have two other speakers to go through. I know we, um, spent extra time as, um, we were planning to go on eco-modulated fees. Um, but, uh, John, this is really interesting, but let's, uh, start with this one other question here before we move to some other speakers. Uh, over to you, um, Scott.
Yeah, I, I can, uh, thank you, Scott, to Five Glass Packaging. I can, I can let it go. John, I'll follow up with you offline. The, the New Jersey, look, PCR requirements are largely a plastics issue. Um, you mentioned the New Jersey, the New Jersey thing is a mistake. Essentially, that still needs to be fixed. They took the California requirement for glass made in California and turned it into a glass sold in New Jersey. Um, and they're suffering all sorts of complications due to it.
Understood. Yep. So I'm just, I'm here to execute what the law says. You know, that's what I'm trying to do. You understand.
Yeah, give me a call. We'll see if we can help you. Um, the, the, the issue is that once you get past plastic, again, as with the other things related to eco modulation, you really need to start to look material by material first. Uh, every one of the different materials has a different supply chain. There's different inflection points in the value chain of who can make the decision about how much recycled content to put in their package at what point in the production of it. For plastics, you can often source recycled plastic, nurdles or pellets, resin, whatever we wanna, you know, whatever version you wanna call it separately from the virgin plastic supply chain and convert it, you know, onsite regardless of what kind of content it has in the material. For other materials like ours, uh, the glass plant is both the converter and the, and the raw material maker. So there, there's different places in the supply chain where the recycled content decisions get made. Uh, our biggest issue is access to recycled material, not a lack of a desire to use it. So, uh, and you also, the producers cannot easily flip their production, you know, from one supplier to another supplier, uh, when they're talking about, you know, materials, you know, such as ours, uh, the metal folks can speak for themselves, but I think they have similar problems.
Understood. Well, thank you very much for having me today. I hope that hit it, Dollar, what you wanted to cover. Uh, I'd be happy to come back another time and go deeper on some topics, uh, if it makes sense, but really enjoyed being with you guys today. Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us, John. Really appreciate it. Pete?
Scott, I, I was just gonna ask for clarification on Scott's comment. I, I just wanted to make sure I understood, um, just the New Jersey comments. Um, i- is, does the glass industry have a perspective on, on, on what the threshold, the minimum recycled content threshold should be in Colorado? And I, and I guess, I, I don't wanna put you too much on the spot. I guess I was just, your comment about, you know, focus on, on plastics and, and not other materials. I guess that's what, what sort of drew me to, to ask the question.
What, what I'm saying, what I'm, what I'm saying, Pete, is that the requirements for plastic, for PCR content sold into an economy are largely upon the plastics industry. And when you try to start, when people try to start applying them to other materials, mistakes are made, okay? The, 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 the California law is about, has been around for twenty-five years or longer, way before anybody even conceived of it for plastic. And it was part of the Bottle Bill program in California to use the glass that was being recovered by the Bottle Bill in California back into the manufacturing plants for glass in California. During the pandemic, when no one could visit and things were being done virtually, that at the last minute, New Jersey decided to say, oh, we're gonna take the California law that passed in twenty nineteen and current, converted into a new thing. They misread it and they added glass into it. Even though the glass requirement is not for glass sold in California, it's for glass made in California, right? And so they turned it into something that is a complete mess.
Yeah, okay.
We can, we can develop a level for glass made in Colorado that is relevant to the glass that the program makes available for us to use in Colorado. The more glass you, the glor- more glass the program makes available for us to use back in our plants in Colorado, we don't have to import as much as we saw on the tour. You know, if, if there's enough glass in Colorado to completely, um, replace the imported color that we need to import Colorado to make the glass in Colorado, we're just not collecting it and making it available to the industry.
Yeah, fair, fair point, Scott. I guess, I guess there's always gonna be some imported because you're gonna get some products potentially that are gonna be
Sure.
built outside of Colorado and brought in, right?
So vast majority, vast majority of the glass sold in Colorado is gonna be made somewhere else.
Okay, okay. We had lots more to follow up for sure, um, here. Um, and, uh, now gonna move on to our next speaker, um, and uh, that will be, oh, Crystal Bayless from US Plastics Pact, providing the industry perspective of PCR. Crystal?
All right. Hello. Well, thank you so much for having me today. And I will apologize in advance to our interpreter because I do have a tendency to talk fast, so I will try to, to rein that in, but please let me know if I'm speeding up.
If you talk that, if you talk as you're doing now, I think they'll be very relaxed.
Very good. All right.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go to the next slide, please. Okay, so the US Plastics Pact is actually a nonprofit organization. We're bringing together businesses, other non-for-profit organizations, government agencies and more to work toward a co- a common vision of a circular economy for plastic packaging. Um, so we want to keep plastic in the economy and, uh, prevent it from ever becoming waste. Go ahead. So you can see we're a partnership of over a hundred and thirty activators. Um, Curic Dr. Pepper is actually one of them. And we've got a, a number of very large brand owners, retailers, as well as local governments, converters, et cetera, um, that are all part of this work that we're doing. Um, I'm gonna go through this relatively quickly because I know we are short on time, but I did just wanna provide the context that we have five goals that we're working toward, which include designing correctly, so it can be reused, recycled or composted. And then actually we're using recycling or composting the material. And then you can see target number four, which is relevant today. Uh, we're working toward an average of thirty percent post-consumer recycle content because using the recycled content is what closes the loop on a circular economy. Go ahead. So each of our activators is required to report annually, um, both on design compliance as well as the amount of PCR that they're using. Uh, this is our most recent annual report, which is the twenty twenty-two annual report. Um, we will, we are currently collecting our twenty twenty-three reporting. That deadline is actually tomorrow. And then that report will come out in December, but we do provide a snapshot of how much PCR our activators are using. Um, and then we break it out by format. So you can see in here, obviously, PET bottles um, are leading the way, um, and it trickles down across the other kinds of, uh, other kinds of plastic packaging formats. Go ahead. Um, we recently released roadmap two point O, which is our, um, all of our targets and our strategic initiatives beyond twenty twenty-five. So not everything's tied exactly to twenty thirty, but roughly a twenty thirty timeline. Um, you can access this full document on our website as well, but I did include a little snippet of what our goals are for our activators just to provide some context on, on what our group is working toward. Um, and as I showed that slide of a hundred and thirty activators before, our roadmap doesn't necessarily mean a hundred percent of all, you know, every single one of the hundred and thirty activators agreed with every single detail on here. But this roadmap did go through multiple iterations of feedback and we got a lot of buy-in from everyone on what realistic, um, aggressive, but achievable targets are. Go ahead. Okay. So what I wanna focus on today is our PCR certification principles. Uh, these were released last year and the document is available on our website. I provided the link, but we are actually in the middle of, it's, it's part of our PCR procurement toolkit, which we're in the middle of revamping. And in the next four to six weeks, that will be changing, so that link probably won't work for you. Um, but it will still be on our website if you just go and, and look in the PCR toolkit. Um, so again, this document that came together was a result, uh, we, we have work streams within the Plastics Pact. And so our post- And so our post-consumer recycled content work stream has about 18 to 20 company or organizations that are involved in that. And there was a group that put together proposed principles. And then again, this was taken to the activator base for additional feedback before we, uh, published it. So this has gotten input from all the different sectors. Uh, some key components that I want to talk about today. Um, so we recommend that every, we recommend the activators have their PCR certified. Um, within our principles, we require third-party certification and, um, that those certification agencies must be accredited. We want certification programs to use ISO definitions and, um, so the ISO definitions for both pre and post-consumer recycled content, because those are different, uh, pre-consumer is often called uh, post-industrial in the United States, but that has to do with where, at, in the whole supply chain, um, the waste was generated. So is it, did it make it to its end use or not? Um, and then also we, uh, would never tell anyone to not use post-industrial or pre-consumer content because it would be silly to send that to the landfill, but, uh, post-consumer content is more challenging to collect and recycle and markets are more challenged. And so we want to make sure that we're focused on driving demand for that. And so, um, our principles say that if, you know, you're going to use both, you need to calculate and claim them separately. Um, additionally, we support a chain of custody model certification and that should be tied to the ISO chain of custody model. I put the ISO standard number in there. Um, and then, uh, within the ISO chain of custody model, there's five different like models, um, whether it's, uh, there's three of them that are identity preserved more or less where you know for sure, yep, this bottle has 15% recycled content in it because it's tracked very detailed. And then there's mass balance and, um, the book and claimer plastics credit models where they may or may not have, um, it's, it's done on more of an accounting basis and reconciliation. You're using the mass, if you're using chemical recycling, you pretty much certainly have to use the math balance model because of that process and the huge amount of tonnage that's going through the process. Um, and within the mass balance model, we say that the free allocation accounting method should not be used. Um, free allocation with a fuel exemption is allowed. Uh, it ensures that the tonnage that's used for energy or fuel is kept separately from the tonnage that's used for raw materials for new products. Um, we do prefer polymers only, which further refines it or proportional accounting is kind of the best in class where that is, you know, that's the, is close to one-to-one input to output as you can get. Um, going to the next slide, please. So I did copy, um, the actual text from our PCR certification principles for chain of custody as well as mass balance. Um, I should say that this process took us eight or nine months to complete when we came to the, you know, discussions around chain of custody, mass balance, accounting principles, et cetera. Um, we bought the ISO manual and we all read it. We read a number of position papers, et cetera. And so this is where the US Plastics Pact landed on things. Um, but ultimately the chain of custody, you know, this model is similar to what food companies are using for traceability and things like that. And so you're essentially following it, um, through the value chain with paper trail to ensure that only one company can own it at any given time and that, that the tonnage is moving through, whether in this exact package or, you know, at a lot level. Um, these are our guidelines through 2025. We will review them again in 2024, which I guess is actually now, um, so probably early 2025. But I don't anticipate our position on chain of custody will change. Go ahead. Next one. Mass balance. Um, so this is, this was our most challenging area and I will admit that I, I'm pretty sure I went through a large bottle of Advil before I got this done. Um, but these are the different things that we looked at. So personally, we recognize mass balance for both mechanically and chemically recycled plastic. Um, it's really the only way to certify chemically recycled plastic. And we added in mechanically recycled just because we didn't want to have a disadvantage for the mechanical recyclers. Um, and then these are all the different things that are listed out in there that goes into a little bit more explanation on why we don't allow for the free allocation accounting method. Um, also some principles in there on accounting methods need to be consistent with historical accounting methods. You know, you can't skew things. Reconciliation should be done on a quarterly basis or more frequently. Um, and then some things in there as far as, you know, not going below zero and if you do immediately rectifying it and third-party verification. Um, so I don't want to drain this slide, especially because I know we don't have that much time left, but all of this is in there. And then again, I had the link on there so you can go into the full document if you'd like. I think that was my last slide, um, and then my contact information if anybody would like to follow up.
Great. Thank you so much, Crystal. Clearly a lot of, uh, effort and thought has gone into this, Pete.
Yeah, thanks. Um, Crystal, just wondering, um, I know you're obviously, you've got lots of, uh, companies that are reporting into you. Can you talk a little bit about the readiness of companies to be able to report on, uh, recycle content? Um, obviously there's some, you, you know, some of this is new and, and the, the standards and things like that that are coming into place. I just, just wondered if you could talk to sort of, you know, company's ability to be able to report on this stuff, um, and how that sort of evolved as, uh, as a US blast of act has, has been in, in place.
Yeah. So as I work with our activators on reporting, I would say that most companies have an easier time tracking PCR content than they do design compliance, which would be like your eco modulation that you discussed earlier. Um, and there's lots of different reasons for that, but the key thing is that if you think about the, the ERP systems or what determines the quantity that you need to bring in for production, um, all of that is tracking things on some unit of measure right now. And so you just need to get things set up. So if you know, you know, there's, there's different things you can configure within the system. Um, but you're ultimately going to know how many pounds you're bringing in because otherwise like if you don't get that in, your factory goes down. Um, whereas on the design compliance side, it's not always is, um, straightforward. So we haven't gotten a lot of pushback from companies saying that they're having a hard time tracking this. Um, I would say key things are making sure that companies are differentiating between like PCR and then the pre-consumer or post-industrial recycled content that does sometimes trip people up a little bit, especially if their specifications allow for either. Um, so it's important to make sure that companies, you know, are clearly understanding what they do allow in their specifications. Um, and then I had one other thing I was going to say, but I completely, we completely slipped out of my mind. Um, oh, the other thing I was going to say too, is that as we work with the larger companies and especially the food companies, like these systems are all in place because of the food safety requirements, which have, you know, been there for 20 to 25 years. We're really digging into making sure we know where everything comes from and, and traceability and such. Um, if you think about smaller companies, especially outside of the food space, it's a little bit more of a, a novel concept. But, um, that, that's just been, you know, the, the general feedback I've gotten as about working with companies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Any other questions? We have one more presentation.
It's just me, so, uh, don't, uh, don't feel like you need to, uh,
Oh, you might want to get some more feedback from the group, right?
It's true.
Or you might be tired out, but okay, let's move over to you, Pete, because we do have at least one, uh, member of the public that would like to make a comment. Crystal, thank you very much here, and I'm sure you're going to be hearing from folks for more information. Thank you.
Perfect. Um, so my slides I think are, are more, um, uh, the summary slides, uh, we are doing a fair amount of work on this. Uh, so there was lots of our team that are, are quite involved in, 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 uh, um, in, uh, in, in, um, gathering more information. Uh, there's a lot that needs to get uncovered when we talk about post-consumer recycled content because obviously it touches on not only plastics, but, but glass, uh, metal, um, uh, and, and paper as well. And, uh, we all know that the packaging, uh, system, uh, is massive when we talk about different types of products that are out there, uh, just to be move one slide forward. Um, so we have had a couple of discussions on recycle content on the 10th and the, and June 7th, uh, 27th. Um, so I just, just quickly speak to a little bit of what we've talked about already, uh, next slide. And Valentin, please tell me if, uh, Valentina, please tell me if I'm talking too quickly. I will try not to do that as well. Um, so we've talked about some of the requirements and Darla's gone over some of this already around. We need to have targets in place for, um, uh, covered materials when it comes to PCR. Um, and targets for 2030 and for 2035. We need to have in place a waiver process. We need to establish how we are going to calculate, uh, recycle content, how we're going to verify it. And I think certainly Crystal spoke to potentially some ways around that today. Uh, around how we're going to eco modulation, eco modulate and how we're going to prioritize, uh, the use of um, these materials into the original product type. Um, and we need to provide opportunities to purchase. Um, uh, we've talked about already generally, I think, how, how that calculation is set up in the legislation. Um, uh, so I won't go into that, but again, the reminder of what is post-consumer um, and how that calculation needs to be made is on the slide. And as I said, I, I, I think, you know, Scott's points are, are good. There is certainly some differences when we talk material to material about what the impact is around uh, pre-consumer and post-consumer, uh, and what that might mean, uh, as we, as we set up the targets. Next slide. Um, reminder, we have talked about some of the, uh, different jurisdictions that do have, uh, uh, recycle content thresholds that are in place. Um, it's, uh, helpful, uh, at times to hear some of the, the, um, specifics on that. I think Scott obviously spoke a little bit to the specifics on New Jersey earlier around glass containers. Uh, there's always a story behind policy and, uh, and the ins and outs of it. Um, but again, there's, there are a number of jurisdictions that have in place uh, recycle content thresholds. They are not in the same extent to what is being proposed in, in, uh, in Colorado, meaning that they would uh, uh, be across, uh, the, uh, um, covered material category for all packaging. And so, you know, as we do this work, we're looking at, again, what are the types of considerations we need to, to take into account when it comes to, how do we set that threshold across potentially many different types of, whether that be paper, uh, paper packaging, plastic packaging, whether it's food grade, whether it's not, um, um, where do we need to look at, um, waivers that may need to be in place, uh, for these products? So in, in those jurisdictions, when we talked about them, we looked at where there are some specific product exemptions that are in place and where there may be broader issues and how they have provided, uh, waivers or the allowance for waivers. Um, uh, to be, um, to be through an application process. Next slide. Um, these are all questions that I think you've seen before. Um, we are still, I think, um, looking for feedback in these areas around the types and approach of what waivers and exemptions we may want to consider. We do know that certain products have limitations around the recycle content potentially, uh, levels that can be in them. I know we've heard that quite a bit around food grade. Um, uh, we are looking for feedback around how we establish, uh, those targets, those thresholds, um, uh, for each of those products. And again, uh, we asked the question, I don't think we're necessarily looking for more additional work, but are there other categories beyond paper, plastic, metal and glass that we should be looking at? Obviously there are other materials that are, um, used to make, um, uh, used as packaging and, uh, like, like textiles, like, um, uh, ceramics or wood. Um, uh, at this point, we're not considering, uh, those categories, but looking for feedback in those areas. And I know we're trying to leave time for comments, so I, I'm trying to be cautious of that, uh, um, Scott. So I don't know if there's any additional feedback or people are tired out.
Thank you, Pete. Um, let's see if we can get some feedback here. We also have, uh, at least two people from the public that would like to speak as well. So if we can keep the questions crisp and the responses crisp as well as possible, that would be great. Liz?
Liz Chapman, Recycle Colorado. Thank you so much for these presentations. Um, based on what we've heard today, Peter, in an attempt to offer advice from the board for your first question, it strikes me that the post-consumer recycled content rates should be aligned with what's happening in other states, since these are producers that distribute nationally. And also there should be an influence of what is practically feasible for those various materials. And that brings me back to one of the comments that was made earlier and a question posed about should these rates and should these criteria be material specific? And it sounds like that is the more realistic way to approach this is to make the rates and the analysis and the bonuses focused in the tier on materials, material specific rather than painting all materials with a broad brush is what I am hearing from what we've heard today from the producers.
Next, Liz.
Thank you, Liz. Are there other questions or comments on any of these questions, these four questions that Pete has up? Okay, um, not hearing any, you can certainly, uh, write them into us. Oh, Scott, go ahead.
Scott, the Fife Glass Packaging. I was trying to give everybody else a chance to say something about these topics since I've it's been quite a, I took my vitamins before today's meeting. Um, you know, the law does not set a goal. The statute does not set a goal. It leaves to the PRO, the ability to recommend an approach for recycle content. Um, I would agree with what, what Liz is saying about material specific approaches. Um, and quite honestly, even outside of my, our material, there are no other national state requirements for the other materials. It's largely plastic. One state popped on glass. And I don't, I haven't seen anything about a statutory requirement, you know, for metal or paper. So, uh, again, I'll urge caution in overdoing it. I think that you can recommend some things that work for the system that Colorado is trying to build. Um, and because there was not a lot of gory detail developed in the needs assessment, I would recommend another round of discussions with each of the material industries uh, and those brand partners, producers about how that is best effectuated for each one of the material groups.
Thanks, Scott. Um, I think we do, we will have to in the program plan have, uh, minimum, uh, content thresholds in there. So we'll have to provide those for each of the core materials. Um, um, but yes, we can follow up with each of those.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying you shouldn't. I'm just saying there's not, there's not a statutory requirement on a specific number. So you can come up with a number that makes sense for the program that you're, you're developing.
Correct. Yeah.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else have a comment or a question? Okay, uh, not seeing any further. Um, so wanna, uh, thank you, Pete and, uh, the advisory board. I will now turn it over to Brandon for public comment period number two. And we, I believe have two people that want to speak. Brandon?
Thank you, Scott. Yep. So we are now at the second public comment period. If you're interested in providing public comment or asking a question on the topic of PCR content, please submit your name and organization in the chat. We will call on attendees in the orders the requests were received. Since we have limited time, we're going to allow for two minutes for each comment. And question answer periods are going to be moderated based on the total number of individuals in the queue to allow for everyone to participate. So we're going to begin with Rachel Setski. Rachel, if you could please unmute, say your affiliation and provide your feedback.
Thank you. I'm Rachel Setski with EcoCycle. We are a nonprofit recycler in Boulder. Um, once again, I just want to thank this group for all the tremendous work you're doing to make producer responsibility work in Colorado. Uh, just want to say that we are very supportive and including goals and incentives for high recycling rate or for high rates of PCR by category that, that does. By category, that that does seem like the best approach, especially as we do have more recycled content available, hopefully through these. E P R programs. Do you want to say, though, that EcoCycle is really opposed to allowing so-called advanced recycling? Or chemical recycling outputs to be counted towards P C R content in plastics? Most common forms of chemical recycling are pyrolysis and gasification. And these processes have decades-old track records of being polluting technologies that promise big recycling results. And instead deliver low P C R yields. And at the same time, these processes cost local governments millions of dollars and use incredible amounts of energy and pollute. Often in disproportionately impacted communities. The majority of of plastics sent through pyrolysis and gasification tend to be turned into oils and gases and burned. And it's not creating a circular system as E P R is intended to do. So we encourage that any P C R. Goals in this program do not allow for chemical recycling. And if they do, we definitely agree with the U S Plastics Pact that the free allocation not be allowed to to be used as a method. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Our next commenter is going to be Henry Stiles. Henry, if you can please unmute, say your affiliation and provide your feedback.
Sure. My name's Henry Stiles and I'm with Environment Colorado. This will be brief because I'm really going to just echo what Rachel just said. We really do support the goal of including high levels of post-consumer recyclable content and packaging. But we do not. Support chemical recycling. Really, we don't even consider chemical recycling recycling. You know, burning plastic is not recycling. So. I can be short with this because I think Rachel has really covered everything. I think a lot of Environment Colorado and a lot of N G Os. Supported. E P R and. We looked at eco modulation to reduce the amount of plastic waste. Very concerned that something like chemical recycling will actually increase the production of plastic. So we're quite concerned about that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry, and thank you, Rachel, for your feedback. We will compile all the comments we receive and include them in the meeting summary. And as a reminder, you can submit public comment at any time to the comment form found on our website. As well as submitting comments via email at E P R comments at state dot C O dot U S. And I'll hand it back over to Scott.
Great. Thanks very much, Brandon and members of the public for your input, Rachel and Henry. I want to thank everyone for the presentations today. And particularly thank the board members for your great questions and comments. We're at that time in the meeting for wrapping up and adjourning. And we're going to get right on time. So P S I is going to be compiling all of the board's feedback. And the comments for Pete and Circular Action Alliance team. And that draft feedback will be saved in the advisory board shared folder. Our next technical work session is going to be on August twenty-ninth. And the meeting recording for today's meeting will be posted on the E P R webpage within the next few days. And please join us at our next regularly scheduled advisory board business meeting, separate from the technical work sessions. That will be on August fourteenth. So board business meeting, August fourteenth, technical work session, another one, August twenty-ninth. So members of the public, stakeholders, thanks very much for attending today. We, of course, value participation and partnership. Really appreciate your time today. And it was a lot of information and a lot to digest. So you might have some interesting dreams tonight. I want to close by saying thank you to the board again. Great feedback, great questions. Members of the public, thank you as well. And. That's about it. So, oh, lastly, I want to thank the interpreters, hopefully. I'm sure we all kept you on your toes, but hopefully you were able to communicate effectively to those needing the translation. So let me say the third technical work session of two thousand and twenty-four is now adjourned. At one twenty-seven P M mountain time. Thanks very much. Have a good rest of the day. Bye-bye.